Call to order the June 14th meeting of the Cary Town Council. In honor of Flag Day today, we have special guests from the American Legion Post 67 to present the flags. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks to American Legion Post 67, this is very special. It helps us keep our focus on Flag Day, which is today, which is very important. All right, our first order of business is to adopt the agenda, and I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
The motion.
Second.
End of second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations, and our only report tonight is from our town manager, Mr. Steigl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, I'll be brief. I just want to congratulate the community staff, vendors, all those involved with the Pimento Cheese Festival. It, I expected it to be a success because of the people that were involved in planning it. What I wasn't prepared for to see just how successful it was, and so I'm looking forward to a second one, and I think it serves as another reminder on just how much people want to come to downtown Cary right now. And Pimento Cheese is good as well. So that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steigl. I'm so sorry I missed that. It sounded like a lot of fun.
Great idea, Doug.
It was awesome.
We now move to the third item on the agenda, which is Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda, and if you would like to speak, I would ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic unless it's a public hearing, and we have several public hearings this evening, and that actually works to your benefit because public hearing speakers have five minutes for their comments. As I said, there's a three-minute time limit for those speakers, and that will be enforced, and when the three-minute time limit expires, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of us speakers, I'll strictly enforce it and ask you to stop immediately. There's a timer on the podium to help know what time you have left. It'll be a green light for the first two and a half minutes, and when there's 30 seconds remaining, that green light will turn into a yellow light, and when your time has expired, it will turn into a flashing red light. And again, this is to, to interrupt you is just to be fair to all of our speakers, and I'm not trying to be rude. To have an efficient Public Speaks Out item, I ask that if you're here with a group, have a spokesperson speak on behalf of the group to reduce repetitive comments, and also I'd ask that if you'd like to speak, line up, which I see we're doing already, and after the person at the podium stands down, you may approach the podium. It also signals to me when I see a line that there are other speakers waiting to speak. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding and respecting that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Thank you, Counsel. My name's Annette Smith, and my family's been in Cary since 1990. I'm here with Benjamin. Benjamin, raise your hand. And I'm here to represent the special populations in Cary, and I will read it. I'm sorry, Judy Newsom is not here, is she? No, okay, she'll miss this. I would first like to commend Judy Newsom and those who have funded and special needs programs over the last several years in Cary for individuals who want to stay in Cary and to enjoy the resources that have been provided here. We're very, very grateful for all of that. We love Cary, we want to stay here, Ben wants to live the rest of his life here. I believe now, though, is the time to consider taking the next step and provide a permanent center for all special populations to share any time of the day or night for both educational, social, and respite reasons. I did send out an email, I should have edited it before I sent it, I sent it to some of you guys, and didn't get a response, and I understand why, it wasn't well-written. Relegating these, this population to evening hours at the senior center or the art center day classes is sort of treating them as not worthy of any direct focus. They really would like a place of their own. Cary's families include, that have special needs or adult special needs make up a large population of your voting and tax base, especially when you consider the autistic population that's here. I just encourage you to seriously act in a proactive manner and try and come up with some ideas. My hope is to maybe consider the old library. I know that I've, I don't know what plans are that is for that, but we would really like for you to seriously consider giving us the old library. And just show these families that there is a place for them to stay here in their hometown and to have a single place for them to go to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I would invite our next speaker forward.
Hi, I'm Debbie Poliafico, and I am here to talk about 17 Resiliv in the corner of Kildare Farm and Penny, and I've been part of this process since the very beginning, and I have to say that I have learned a whole lot about what each council can and cannot do, and I know I speak for many of the people who have been involved in this project, and we are really thankful for all the time and the due diligence that everyone has put in and who has been involved in this proposal. Cary Oil and the Breeze Through people have been great to work with as well. I want to thank everyone for that additional meeting that you held last Monday, and although in the end, nothing physically is going to change in regards to the application as an outcome of the meeting, one really important thing was shared with all of us who were there, and that was the proposed site plan. Whether it was supposed to be shared or not, it was. And I can tell you that the ability for us to visualize what the Breeze Through group plans as, at this site and the layout, was major. It was huge. Even though many of us feel that 18 fueling positions are still more than enough, the way they plan to situate them on the property makes it much more palatable for many of us. And I realize the site plan is something that shouldn't be shared, and after sharing the plan, it was reiterated many times over by a town council member that the plan is not etched in stone, and I understand that. But, again, I'm speaking for the people who are involved, and what we hope is that whomever is responsible for approving the layouts takes into consideration the positive impact that that design had on all of the thought processes of the people involved who weren't really for that project. It would be greatly appreciated if people can do whatever they can to keep the site plan as close to what was presented to us as possible. And again, I just want to thank everybody for being involved, listening to us, and just coming to an agreement that I think we all can be happy with even if we agree to disagree. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, good evening, mayor and town council members. My name is Jeannie Hoffman, I'm with Gigi's Playhouse, so hopefully you remember me from two years ago. So just wanted to actually come and report. This year, we, this weekend, we're going to be celebrating our two-year anniversary, and I wanted to thank you for your past support and future support, hopefully. I just wanted to let you know how much this has changed our community, and so I have lots of good news to share. So, to date, we are serving 495 families. That's pretty amazing in just two years. We have two full-time staff, we only had one last year, and then in January of this year, we had to hire another one. Good problem to have. And I just want to, and the rest are all volunteers. Our board continues to be volunteers, all of our program leaders are volunteers, our therapists, from our professionals, therapists who come and volunteer during their lunch hour, to the head chef at Wake Med Hospital comes and volunteers. And I constantly get emails and texts and communication, they're thanking me for having Gigi's Playhouse, so I'm like, well, thank you because you're giving your time to come and volunteer. So I just want to let you know the impact that this has made on our community has, has been great in just the short period of time. And a couple partnerships that we've made has been with NCCU, their graduate speech students have come, and they need hours for evaluations and diagnostics, so they, it's been a win-win for both of us, and they have their hands-on training, which has been phenomenal, and our families get to benefit because it's all free, again, to our families. The other partnerships we've made is, just so you know, the printing, that's been all in-kind donations from CEI printers. They have just been so positive about what we're doing in the community, and so they have done those type of things for us as an in-kind donation, which is phenomenal. And just one other, a couple other testimonials I wanted to give was the impact. We had, in August of 2016, right after we opened, we had a 54-year-old man come to our doors, who lives here in Cary, and his brother said he can't read, he can't write, and he's 54, can he come? And I said, absolutely. I'm happy to say we had our literacy program, which is a lot of our funding needs to go to, our literacy program, one-on-one tutoring, and after one year, he has been starting to read words, and just in this gala that we had in May, he actually presented a speaker. He had read off of four cards, and he asked me to stand right by him in case he messed up, but he did a phenomenal job. Another story is a 30-year-old young woman who did echolalia, which she just repeat everything you said, and now she answers our questions. So this is just, thank you so much for the impact because you are making, you're changing these families' lives. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman, for all you're doing for us.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Anyone at all?
My name is George Burrell. I'm an affected resident in relation to the gas station at Kildare Farm Road and Penny Road, and I have considerable knowledge of real estate development, architecture, construction management over decades in many parts of the world. This application should not be allowed to move forward because a proposed huge, huge gas station does not improve the neighborhood, and if built, will degrade the neighborhood. The proposed huge gas station of built will be considerably underutilized. This would create a built, large space which will be little used by people. It will be sheltered from the public view by its suggested design and has vehicular access and egress. Thus, this place will become a harbor for nefarious activities further degrading the neighborhood. The Cary Chief of Police, after the last information meeting, agreed that the above-proposed new gas station would attract activities and people of the above nefarious nature which would increase the future degradation of our neighborhood. The mayor of Cary wrote in an email to me that zoning is about the community. For this gas station matter, the community is primarily the residents who live nearby, then people who pass by this location, then the overall nature of our town. Virtually all the nearby residents do not want this proposed huge gas station to be built in our neighborhood. The applicant stated at the recent information meeting that his proposed huge gas station is to meet his business needs and the economics of gas stations. His business desires and hopes for the future profits has no place in considering a zoning application or reapplication. As the mayor wrote, zoning is for the community, and zoning is certainly not for the entrepreneurial desires of the applicant. The thinking and actions of the council, as the mayor wrote, should be to the future interests of the residents of Cary who make up the community of Cary. There is no need for the proposed huge gas station in this location, as all residents nearby and placent by can be fully serviced with easier access at existing gas stations and the huge variety of shopping already available, even up and down Kildare Farm Road. Also, the creation of this huge building will cause neighborhood degradation and a haven for nefarious activities.
Mr. Burrell, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker for Public Speaks Out? Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? There's anyone to follow this gentleman? I would ask that you place yourself on the stairs so we'll know you're ready to speak. Yes, sir?
I represent the residents of Ashton-Woods Community.
Could you give us your name, please?
Chopin Patel. This is the community, Kildare Crossing, off of Arthur Pierce. One of the things that we wanted to, a couple of things we want to bring to the record. Last time when we met, in, in the town council's consideration of the, of the new development from Blue Hill, we are not in agreement for them to join our HOA, so I do want town council...
I think this is a public hearing, which, hold on just a second.
It's just a public hearing. Okay, I apologize.
So, Mr. Patel, what we're going to do, when we get to that public hearing, I'm going to call for you first.
Sure.
So that you can come back, and you'll get five minutes instead of three, so you have longer to speak.
That's fine, I'm sorry.
Okay? Sorry for the confusion.
No worries.
No problem. All right. Anyone else to speak for Public Speaks Out? Anything not a public hearing? And we'll get to the public hearings coming up shortly. Okay, we'll close Public Speaks Out, and we now move to the consent agenda. For the benefit of people watching this meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all consent agenda items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes, pre-audit of electronic transactions resolution, conveyance of town property to NC DOT for traffic signal installation associated with the Glen at West High Subdivision, Cary Senior Housing Prop LLC requesting purchase of right-of-way and easements, fiscal year 2019 through 2023 transit, regional call center agreement. Would council members like any of these items pull for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to our fifth item on the agenda, which is our public hearings, and we have several this evening. Our first public hearing is on the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget, and Mr. Steigl will introduce this item, and then we'll open the public hearing, and council will not take action on this item this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Public engagement is a necessary and essential ingredient of a well-functioning local government. All public engagement activities share the same basic objective of making government work better by bringing it closer to citizens, enhancing accountability, building trust, and instilling a sense of purpose and common direction. Budgeting is a fundamental activity that symbolizes an explicit agreement with our residents, that being private resources or tax dollars are collected in exchange for public services and benefits that fulfill community priorities and objectives. Our citizens rightfully expect us to deliver on that promise, and I believe we continue to do so. I believe the proposed budget meets our citizens' expectations and has been directly drawn from the objectives explicitly stated in the imagined Cary community plan, which represents our citizens' vision of the future. We have a lot of priorities ranging from public safety, recreation, safe drinking water, to other quality of life measures like well-maintained streets and a walkable, connected community. Tonight's meeting provides one of many opportunities for our citizens to participate in our decision-making process. Citizen voices should make a difference in our priorities, and this is the formal opportunity and time and place to hear their thoughts about the budget for the fiscal year that begins July 1st. And with that, I'll turn it over to Karen Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Steigl, and good evening, council. Before we begin the public hearing, I'd like to highlight three key messages about the budget for those who are watching that may be new to this process. First, our priorities for service reflect a continuation of our operations without any notable increase in funding for programmatic changes or a tax increase to pay for them. Within those ongoing operations, staff is and will continue to be focused on efficiency improvements like a 3-1-1 system and technology initiatives that will maximize the value of our tax dollars and our user charges now and into the future. We've shared that we don't think that our history of affording increases in service levels, population, and inflation without a tax increase can continue, so we intend to demonstrate that we're doing the very best that we can with existing resources before we recommend any property tax increases. Next, we're facing changing economic times for recycling. In our detailed review of the budget, we shared that a ton of recycling has gone from generating $10 in revenue to costing $22 to dispose of in just the last 12 months, and that's an impact of almost $300,000 per year. We know that recycling is a key town value for preserving our environment, so regardless of the economics, our service level will be maintained in FY 2019. The budget includes a $1 increase in the monthly sanitation rate to strengthen the resources that support our solid waste program and address this new gap. Finally, a recommendation for an increase in vehicle license fees demonstrates your commitment to street maintenance and sidewalk construction. New revenues will create almost $2 million in FY 2019 to help address the priorities that our community expressed in a recent citizen survey. The next two charts illustrate the importance of these revenues. In this chart, you can see how almost $700,000 in new revenue will provide for a sizable increase in the sidewalk program compared to our recent history. In this chart, you can see that our resources for street maintenance are dropping, and the extra $1.3 million per year is essential to fund this high-priority capital program. These capital trends lead us to look again into our capital plan that now has almost as many question marks as answers. In FY 2019, we will complete a comprehensive review of our capital plans and those financing alternatives. For more than 50, for more than 30 years, Cary's history of growth has required a massive capital program, and as our growth slows and we turn our focus to maintenance and the needs of a more mature community, it's time to reexamine our approach. We'll also look at the funded projects that are already on the table and take a fresh look at what is achievable in our highest priorities for the future. We envision active citizen involvement as an important part of this plan refresh. So speaking of citizen involvement, I'll return to our focus with the public hearing process, and like Mr. Steigl, remind everyone that this budget public hearing is not the only time that our citizens are invited to participate. We monitor social media, our budget input email, and our budget input phone line year round. Last week, we provided you with public input that we had received up until that time. Going forward, when we have citizen input, we'll bring you that information through our new quarterly process, one of the new initiatives that we've created to provide accountability to you through project and financial updates. So in closing, I'll remind you that at your next meeting on June 28th, you're scheduled to consider the budget for public adoption that will go into effect on July 1st. And with that, mayor, I'll turn it back over to you, start the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. Now's the time for the fiscal year 2019 public hearing, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening, Sarah Merz here with Advocates for Health in Action, or AHA for short, and I just want to thank you all for your service and for choosing to invest in infrastructure and sidewalks and for recognizing your community asking for that. I was here, what, maybe a month ago when you were still having that conversation, and I just want to thank you and staff. I know you've got a lot of competing demands, and this one made the list, so thank you. And I'm also speaking on behalf of Karen Ringe of Wake Up Wake County. We've both been working on some of this together, she couldn't be here, but sends her appreciation also. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Leigh Dukie, and I'm the executive director of Interact, and I'm a longtime resident of Cary. I'm honored to be here, and I thank each of you for your vision and leadership in our fine community. Interact's mission is to save lives, rebuild lives, and secure safer futures for victims and survivors of domestic and sexual violence in our entire community. We are our county's only provider of comprehensive emergency support, and we make a life and death difference 24/7. I'm here today to thank you. Simply put, we can't provide these critical public safety services without you. According to the CDC, more than one in three women and more than one in four men will experience rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in their lifetime. Our town is no exception. Domestic and sexual violence aren't some other community's issues, they are ours. But we are a community with solutions. We bring together eight community partners, three crisis lines, law enforcement, legal services, group and individual counseling, case management, court advocacy, and North Carolina's first and only community-based sexual assault forensic examination center, the Sala Center, all under one roof. And we provide our county's only emergency shelter program for women and children fleeing abuse, a 45-bed home away from home. Tonight, I really want to focus, though, on our partnership with the Cary Police Department through our lethality assessment program, or LAP for short, which identifies victims of domestic violence who are at the very highest risk of being seriously injured or killed, and connects them at the scene to Interact for comprehensive services. Each week, a dedicated member of Interact staff is at the Cary Police Department, available to support Cary victims and law enforcement. I'm also pleased to share with you tonight the good news that Interact has applied for funding to be able to increase our presence at the Cary Police Department beginning later this summer. We are so pleased and so proud and so grateful to be able to partner with Detective Rebecca Platts in this wonderful collaborative spirit and initiative. More than ever before, victims are reaching out to Interact, and that's good news. It's a testament to greater accessibility... It's a testament to greater accessibility, visibility, coordination, and connectivity of services, and you are help leading the way. We will always respond to crisis, but the end game must be to break the cycle of violence through connective impact initiatives and even deeper collaboration. With your continued support, we know that we will sustain and even expand this nationally acclaimed model of integrated services. We are so proud and grateful to partner with the town of Cary in this life-saving, life-changing work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Detective Platts with the Cary Police Department, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about our interaction with Interact and the great relationship that we have. The town of Cary has partnered with Interact for several years, which has created an inseparable bond. The relationship has allowed the citizens of Cary to obtain victim-related services immediately when they need that help, when they're reporting a domestic violence incident, as well as allowing them to relate and get services closer to home and not have to go into downtown Raleigh to receive services and help. The Cary Police Department began providing the lethality assessment in May of 2013. Those lethality assessments are performed to victims and survivors of domestic violence. They're designed to determine, as you heard, if the relationship, if the person is in a relationship that has been statistically proven to be high danger. The assessments are completed by the officers on scene right when the incident is happening, and if they do screen in, day or night, we call Interact immediately, and they speak to someone at that time. If they need somewhere safe to stay, Interact provides shelter for them for the evening. If they need help later, they provide that help the next day. If they don't need immediate shelter, they have time to come up with a safety plan with an advocate when they're on the phone with them, and then set up the time to explore other options and relating to get safety for themselves and their family members. Just this year alone, we've already completed 114 lethality assessments in Cary. Fifty-seven of those individuals have screened in high danger, and 31 of those individuals were immediately connected with an advocate while the officer was on scene. Of the 114 clients, 35 have self-admitted that they believe the offender would try to kill them. While we as law enforcement are not able to stay on scene all night, we are able to connect them to Interact and get them somewhere safe to stay where they can have some kind of sleep and some kind of peace during that evening. Since we began completing the lethality assessment in 2013, approximately half of all survivors that screen in high danger are connected on scene to an advocate. Our partnership doesn't end there. After reviewing the incidents, the public information report is provided to Interact so that they can reach out to these victims that are involved in these incidents. They can offer them services even if they didn't screen in, but they had lethality assessment done, and then those that didn't have a chance to have lethality screening done based on the criteria set forth in the program. It makes them aware of the resources and any assistance that can be provided to them by Interact. Interact is also present here every Monday morning from 9 to 1. They can help with people that walk in, have help with people that walk in. When we complete interviews after incidents have occurred, we can bring them in to offer their services as well. And this also helps with those that want to come in and talk to somebody, but they don't want to talk and they don't want to report to law enforcement. They offer their services, and they can offer that confidentiality that we as law enforcement cannot offer to all citizens. This has proven to be helpful to the citizens of Cary, as well to our own employees here in Cary, have utilized them when they have been here. The Cary Police Department is very thankful for the bond and relationship that we share with Interact, and we look forward to furthering the services we can provide to the citizens of Cary to help create a safer future for all of our residents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Detective. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Anne Rollins, the Executive Director at the Alice Haggock Post Center for Health Education, and want to be here tonight to thank you for your past support and your continued support, and want to just update you on a few new things that we're doing. And I think that's being passed out, but last year, we worked with y'all when we had Sam Conans here, worked with the police and with the manager's office and with you, Mayor, around the opioid epidemic and educating from prevention to enforcement. So we know that this is not over, and we're expanding on that to look this year at the language and the stigma around that, as we see, like with your public hearing you had with Channel 11 last year, working through the stigma that we can address those things. And then working on the Biobot with the town and looking at being the education component for that with the researchers and with the town and the mayor's challenge. We hope that Bloomberg sees that Cary is the number one, so we appreciate that. And knowing that we are seen as the prevention health education specialist across North Carolina, have the most certified substance use prevention specialist in the area. So thank you so much, and we appreciate your support and continue to work with y'all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Weinberg and members of the town council, thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of my fellow citizens. I'd like to ask those who are here in support of my comments this evening, pardon me?
Could you give us your name for the record, please?
I'm getting there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to ask those who are here, who are here in support of my comments this evening, to stand and be acknowledged just for a second. Thanks, folks. My name is Ken Griffo.
Thank you, Mr. Griffo.
And I've been a citizen of the town of Cary since 1993, when I relocated my family here from Michigan. Having lived in five states now, and as a businessperson who travels all over the United States and the world, I'm always pleased to come home to Cary, where we have a wonderful way of life. In particular, as an avid scout or an outdoorsman, I appreciate all the parks and greenways available to our citizens to get out and enjoy the beautiful weather that we have here. I and my fellow citizens are grateful for the thoughtful planning that's gone into creating a good community in which to live and work, and I know that all that hard work that was done by town staff and approved by the folks in our leadership that sit before me tonight have played an integral role in creating such an enjoyable environment. Thank you for that. Having been a member of this community for the past 25 years, I'm cognizant of the fact that Cary has grown significantly in that time. By my estimation, the population has nearly tripled since my family moved to town. With each phase of growth, careful planning must be and was clearly done to accommodate that growth. One element of that growth was the widening of Kildare Farm Road back in 2008. As a resident of Lockmere, this is close to home for me and my neighbors. Part of that widening involved taking a pathway through the woods with a footbridge over Swift Creek that was part of the Lockmere Trail System and moving it up to where pedestrians are right up against traffic on the east side of Kildare Farm Road. What was once a safe and peaceful passage through the woods is now an intimidating walk about three feet alongside 50 mile-per-hour auto traffic with no barrier except the small six-inch curb. Many of our neighbors agree that this change has adversely affected our quality of life. The old trail was a connector for Lockmere Highlands and surrounding neighborhoods to the main Lockmere neighborhood facilities and shopping. It was used heavily by walkers, joggers, dog walkers, bicyclists, parents with strollers, and children riding bikes to the main Lockmere pool and tennis courts. The new narrow sidewalk causes grave concern for our children's and pets' safety and is a noisy and perilous route compared to our formal peaceful walk through the woods. The solution that was put in place of a crosswalk across Kildare Farm Road to a wider lane on the bridge, while better than the narrow lane, is not a comparable replacement for our footbridge through the woods. My fellow Lockmere residents Elise and Richard Spalding and I have spent time with town staff discussing potential solutions to restoring that safe, peaceful passage. What we learned is that the old trail, specifically the wooden footbridge that went across Swift Creek, was a floodplain hazard that actually contributed to the floodplain and increased it in a meaningful way. None of us want to revert back to that situation, but as we've had discussions with town staff, we've come up with several workable solutions that have the potential to restore the safe, peaceful passage that was available prior to 2008 without compromising the floodplain situation. If we're successful, we're told by town staff that the resulting walkway might complement our town's long-term plans to integrate the walkways of Lockmere with Cary, with the Cary and Raleigh Greenway system. Our purpose tonight is to raise awareness of this issue and to apprise you of our meetings with town staff to come up with viable solutions. Our next steps are to continue working with the town staff and with stakeholders, including Lockmere Homeowners Association and the Lockmere Golf Course, to determine the best option for restoring a safe and peaceful path connecting Lockmere Highlands with the main Lockmere subdivision. Tonight, we would like to gain your agreement to invest in a preliminary feasibility and engineering assessment for the most promising alternative identified in those meetings. We'll submit a more formal proposal when the best solution is identified, working with town staff. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Griffo. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time tonight. My name's Laura Moore. I'm the Executive Director of the Concert Singers of Cary, and I'm simply here tonight to thank you for your past support of the cultural arts community in Cary, and we appreciate your support this year as well. You're to be commended for that support, and we plan to remain involved and provide beautiful choral music for the town in the next year. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Richard Wilson. I was here at this meeting last year, asking you to devote some fairly urgent resources to studying the problem of trees that are disappearing and the loss of natural wooded areas. I want to thank you for what's happened over the course of this year, which is a number of, I think, very valuable conversations about that subject. Tonight, I just wanted to bring you some information that I've gotten for you. The first brochure entitled "Nature's Riches," which is produced by the Nature Conservancy, about the financial benefits that arise from the beneficial effects of nearby nature on human physical health and mental health. The second is a little more detailed with regard to those benefits, not the economic ones, entitled "Outside Our Doors." Both of them are fairly short executive briefing kind of books, and I think there'll be valuable information for you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Next speaker, please.
I'm Gina Wilson. I would like to have our urban forests being considered in the Cary's budget for 2019. I believe developing in Cary and clearcutting of trees can and should be controlled for the benefit of the residents, our environment, and for the land that is home to wildlife. Trees are good for property values. Trees make people peaceful and happy. Trees prevent water runoff, and keeping trees prevent wildlife displacement so they don't end up in our backyards. I have lived in Cary for 23 years, and the trees, one of the most attractive things here, are disappearing at an alarming rate. I've stood at this podium before as a resident and as a volunteer for Keep the Canopy, a neighborhood program that works to preserve natural wooded areas in Cary. We talk a lot to residents at our tent at Herb Fest, in casual conversations with neighbors, on the various online community forums, and we hear the same frustration and sadness at losing our urban forests. We hope that you can change that. In your budget consideration, please set aside some funds to save some of our urban forests. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Janet Cohen, Executive Director of the Community Initiatives of North Carolina. And I first wanted to just share with you what the definition of community is, a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attributes, interests, and goals. So at the Community Initiatives, we really pride ourselves on bringing inclusion and diversity to the community in all areas. And so we are very thankful for your past support in allowing us to do that for the town of Cary with events that we've been able to do with cultural arts. And this year, wanted to just come to show a focus on what we're doing this year. We have really taken a stand on mental illness as well as gun controls in our school. Now, understanding that fortunately the town is unable to do very much as it is a Wake County School Board, we have taken it upon ourselves to meet with Wake County Superintendent Monica Johnson, and we are working with her so that we can bring the resources that our schools need, understanding that the Cary schools may be different than some of the Wake County schools located in other areas. And we are willing and able to cultivate and showcase what each individual community needs. So I thank you for that support and also for the mental health illness. You know, a lot of times here within our current community, we think that we are, I don't want to say privileged, but able to look at, hey, we have the lowest crime rate, but we're not realizing what's really going on in the homes. We're not realizing what these young folks are going through just because the crime rate may be low. And so we're really focused on going into the schools, particularly within the youth, to help them cultivate whatever issues may be going on, whether it be bullying, whether it be depression, and really stopping the mental illness before it gets to a point of destruction as we've seen in the recent. So we just really thank you for your support for this year and the coming years, for we are really focused on making not just the town of Cary great, but our community at large. So we appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing on the budget? Anyone at all? We'll close the public hearing for the budget and open it up to council members for questions or comments. We'll take action, as was mentioned earlier, at our June 28 meeting on the budget. Until then, as was also mentioned, please feel free to submit comments so that we can review them. We now move to our next public hearing, 5.2, which is an annexation, 18A03, Geneva Lloyd Baker Airs Annexation. Planner Desmond Corley will introduce the hearing, and council may take action on this item at a future meeting, and Mr. Corley will introduce it.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. This request is for annexation of 3.32 acres of property located at 917 Walter Ruve Boulevard, approximately 250 feet west of the intersection with Davis Drive. The proposed annexation also includes 1.7 acres of adjacent right-of-way. The property is located within Cary's ETJ and is contiguous to the existing corporate limits. The zoning is O and I conditional use. The request is associated with a development plan that proposes a 16,700-square-foot kennel and an application for special use approval for an associated outdoor activity area. A kennel is allowed under the current zoning, and an associated outdoor activity area is allowed with special use approval from the town council. Since the associated development plan and special use request will be presented to council later this year, the petitioner requests that action on the annexation be deferred following the public hearing. Annexation petition would be brought back to council for action when the special use application and development plan are presented. This is in staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Now's the time for public hearing, 5.2, which is an annexation, 18A03, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this annexation public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to our next public hearing. Our next public hearing is 18A02, another annexation from Rex Hospital Incorporated. And once again, Mr. Corley will introduce the hearing, and council will take action on this item this evening. Mr. Corley?
Thank you, Mayor. This request is for annexation of 5.27 acres located at 4295 NC-55 Highway, approximately 550 feet south of the intersection with McCrimmon Parkway. The proposed annexation also includes 2.14 acres of adjacent right-of-way. The property is located within Cary's ETJ and is contiguous to the existing corporate limits. It is zoned R-40 and is within a mixed-use overlay district. The property is also located within an area of the approved Alston Activity Center concept plan that allows for commercial, office, and residential uses. The request is associated with a development plan that proposes a 99,000-square-foot building proposed for medical office use. The property must be annexed before the development plan can be approved. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Now's the time for the public hearing for annexation, 18A02, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this annexation public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions, comments, or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve annexation, 18A02.
There's a motion.
Second.
And the second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to the fourth public hearing, and it's another annexation, 18A01, Green Level West Road and Pine Rail Lane Properties Annexation.
Thank you, Mayor. This request is for annexation of three properties totaling 79.87 acres. The properties are located at 4208 and 4216, Green Level West Road, and 4201, Pine Rail Lane, north of Green Level West Road, and west of the American Tobacco Trail. The proposed annexation also includes 2.46 acres of adjacent right-of-way. The proposed annexation area is contiguous to the existing corporate limits, but is outside Cary's ETJ in unincorporated Wake County. It is currently zoned Wake County Residential 40 watershed. Since the property is not in Cary's ETJ and does not have Cary zoning, and the applicant wishes to develop under Cary zoning and development regulations, it is necessary to bring the property into the town's corporate limits. A Cary zoning designation must also be established at the same time. In conjunction with the annexation petition, a rezoning request has also been submitted to designate initial Cary zoning for the property. The public hearing for the rezoning was conducted on May 3, and the case was forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and consideration. The proposed zoning would allow detached dwellings, townhomes, and semi-detached dwellings on the property. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Now's the time for the public hearing for annexation 18A01. And I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this annexation public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions, comments, or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve annexation 18A01.
There's a motion.
Second.
And the second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or any opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We now move to the fourth public hearing, and it's another annexation, 18A01, Green Level West Road and Pine Rail Lane Properties Annexation. And Mr. Corley will once again introduce the item, and we'll take action on this annexation at a future meeting. Mr. Corley.
Thank you, Mayor. This request is for annexation of three properties totaling 79.87 acres. The properties are located at 4208 and 4216, Green Level West Road, and 4201, Pine Rail Lane, north of Green Level West Road, and west of the American Tobacco Trail. The proposed annexation also includes 2.46 acres of adjacent right-of-way. The proposed annexation area is contiguous to the existing corporate limits, but is outside Cary's ETJ in unincorporated Wake County. It is currently zoned Wake County Residential 40 watershed. Since the property is not in Cary's ETJ and does not have Cary zoning, and the applicant wishes to develop under Cary zoning and development regulations, it is necessary to bring the property into the town's corporate limits. A Cary zoning designation must also be established at the same time. In conjunction with the annexation petition, a rezoning request has also been submitted to designate initial Cary zoning for the property. The public hearing for the rezoning was conducted on May 3, and the case was forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and consideration. The proposed zoning would allow detached dwellings, townhomes, and semi-detached dwellings on the property. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Now's the time for the public hearing for annexation 18A01. And I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this annexation public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions, comments, or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve annexation 18A01.
There's a motion.
Second.
And the second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or any opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We now move to the fourth public hearing, and it's another annexation, 18A01, Green Level West Road and Pine Rail Lane Properties Annexation. And Mr. Corley will once again introduce the item, and we'll take action on this annexation at a future meeting. Mr. Corley.
Thank you, Mayor. This request is for annexation of three properties totaling 79.87 acres. The properties are located at 4208 and 4216, Green Level West Road, and 4201, Pine Rail Lane, north of Green Level West Road, and west of the American Tobacco Trail. The proposed annexation also includes 2.46 acres of adjacent right-of-way. The proposed annexation area is contiguous to the existing corporate limits, but is outside Cary's ETJ in unincorporated Wake County. It is currently zoned Wake County Residential 40 watershed. Since the property is not in Cary's ETJ and does not have Cary zoning, and the applicant wishes to develop under Cary zoning and development regulations, it is necessary to bring the property into the town's corporate limits. A Cary zoning designation must also be established at the same time. In conjunction with the annexation petition, a rezoning request has also been submitted to designate initial Cary zoning for the property. The public hearing for the rezoning was conducted on May 3, and the case was forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and consideration. The proposed zoning would allow detached dwellings, townhomes, and semi-detached dwellings on the property. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Now's the time for the public hearing for annexation 18A01. And I would invite our first speaker forward.
I'm Lynn Johnson. I live at 4224 Green Level West Road, Apex, NC. I have to admit to you that this is not my favorite thing to do, so please don't be offended. But I was here for the earlier meeting about this, and I have very strong feelings about this annexation request. I am also representing Martha and Robert Brinson, who are 4300 Green Level and could not be here tonight. If this, and let me preface my comments by saying that we are the two properties that are excluded. If this project is approved as it stands right now, it will create a doughnut hole for our two homes. We will be surrounded by the Town of Cary on three sides. Across the street will be the Town of Apex, yet we will remain Wake County residents. I have a number of concerns about what that would ultimately mean to us, but I won't enumerate those at this time. However, what I would like to clarify, that we are not the creator of this situation. In early January, the Brinsons and myself met with Mike Hunter. He had contacted us. We responded back. We gave him our permission for him to have our properties appraised for potential sale to him. Immediately prior to the neighborhood meeting, he presented us with appraisals and the information that he had no interest in purchasing our properties. He indicated that it would be a burden for them to have the properties. Later, we secured our own appraisals, and our representative spoke with Mike Hunter and offered him the first refusal for purchasing our properties at fair market value. He immediately declined the offer, but then suggested that we contact an eminent domain lawyer and offered to share the name of a good one. Well, I personally find the growth in my area to be quite painful, especially the thought of a road going through my home that has been in my family for 38 years. However, I recognize that the growth is here, and it's the future. I'm reconciled to the fact that Wimberly Road is going through my home at some point in the future. And in looking at this project's plan and other projects that are further north, I can actually see all the benefits of having the road for the future growth of Cary and the transportation needs of the community. However, we are not interested in becoming a doughnut hole surrounded by two different municipalities. So in closing, I thank you for the opportunity to share this, and I hope that these considerations will be taken into your future actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and as was mentioned earlier, we will make a decision on this at a future meeting. The next two public hearings are combined. These are items 5.5 and 5.6. They include the annexation 18A07, which is 3500 Arthur Pierce LLC and Swicegood Annexation, and 5.6, which is the rezoning, 18REZ07, Arthur Pierce Road North rezoning. And we're going to hear from both items. No action will be taken this evening, and they will return to council at a future date for decision at that time. Principal Planner Scott Ramage will present both of these items. Ms. Ram, Mr. Ram.
Good evening, Mayor. As you mentioned, these two cases are for an annexation request and a rezoning request for three properties totaling about 19.6 acres off of Arthur Pierce Road. The site is on the north side of Arthur Pierce Road, about 1,800 feet east of Kildare Farm Road. The site's currently outside of Cary's ETJ, and the site's annexation is required for initial Cary zoning of the site. As you can see, the site is contiguous with existing town limits. The site is currently zoned with Wake County's residential 30 district zoning, and the applicant is requesting rezoning to transitional residential conditional use district, and five conditions have been proposed. The applicant's first condition concerns allowed uses. This is a list of most of the uses permitted in the TR district, either by right or with a special use permit. From among those permitted uses, the applicant's proposed to only allow detached dwellings and townhouses. The other zoning conditions are these: that there would be a maximum density of three units per acre, that no more than 3/4 of the units would be townhouses, and that the townhouses would be grouped in two-unit buildings, so they would have more akin to duplexes. The community gathering space would be at least 8,000 square feet, which is double LDO standards. There will be no reduction or averaging of the Arthur Pierce Road, Arthur Pierce Road and streetscape, and stream buffers will not be counted towards the required minimum lot sizes. According to the Future Growth Framework map, the site is part of an area designated as an emerging suburban neighborhood. Suburban neighborhoods are envisioned as consisting primarily of detached houses, lots of anywhere from a quarter acre to an acre in size, unless they're in a clustered subdivision, when smaller lots could be appropriate. Suburban neighborhoods also allow for limited pockets of other housing types, such as patio homes and townhomes. The town's GIS mapping indicates the possible presence of a soil survey stream across the center of the site, however, that would need to be confirmed by a later field survey. The Parks Facilities Master Plan recommends a greenway trail traversing the site from east to west, and the Parks Plan also recommends citing a future neighborhood park somewhere in the general area, however, a site has not yet been acquired. The Community Plans Move Chapter designates Arthur Pierce Road as a thoroughfare, but as a three-lane thoroughfare, and the plan also recommends the extension of a two-lane collector road across the northwest part of the site. That's an extension of Hogarth Street. The site is not presently served by fixed route bus transit service, and there are no long-range plans to extend service to this area south of 1010 Road. Notification of tonight's hearing was mailed to all properties within 800 feet of the site, and the property was posted in two locations. So staff have evaluated this case regarding conformance with policies from three of the Community Plan chapters: Live, Engage, and Shape. And we'll talk about Live and Shape first. The proposal conforms, we think, to the intent of Live Policy 2, to increase the variety of housing townwide, but less so to the intent in that policy that small lot and attached housing products should be cited proximate to services and transit. The proposal conforms, we think, to the intent of Live Policy 3, which is geared to increasing the variety of housing types in any one neighborhood or part of town, so that people can age through different housing types and styles over the years without having to leave their part of Cary. As mentioned earlier, the site is in a suburban neighborhood, which is intended to have primarily detached housing on larger lots with limited pockets of small lot and attached housing. So this map shows existing TR zoning south of 1010 outlined in the bold black boundaries, and it shows we have two active rezoning cases requesting TR. The one labeled Site is tonight's site that you're looking at. There's another one you'll entertain in a public hearing at a later date. At present, staff calculated that 3.7% of the total land area south of 1010 Road currently has TR equivalent zoning. If both of those two cases that are pending for TR zoning were approved, that would rise to about 4.7% of all the land south of 1010 Road. Shape Policy 6 recommends the provision of adequate transitions next to adjacent development. The photo at left is a view north across the field at the northwest corner of the site, looking towards those new homes in Kildare Crossing subdivision. The LDO would require a 40-foot type-A perimeter buffer adjacent to those homes if lots smaller than about 8,000 square feet are built, or if townhomes were built proximate to those homes. The 40-foot type-A buffer should provide an adequate transition to those homes. The site also includes a house that's on the Wake County Historic Resources inventory. The original part of the house dates from about 1850, with additions through about 1900 and numerous interior alterations since then. Staff and consultants from Capitol Area Preservation toured the site in March, and it was felt that the house has some potential, but there are two major challenges. First, the house, as you can see in the photo, sits very close to Arthur Pierce Road, and after the road's widened to a three-lane section, plus curb gutters, sidewalks, and so forth, the porch will be immediately adjacent to the sidewalk. Second, there have been many interior modifications over the years, and if preserved much of the interior, would need to be fully stripped back in order to do any kind of reconstruction. Fourteen neighbors attended the neighborhood meeting on April 4. The applicant asked the neighbors at that meeting whether they felt the site should be age-restricted, but the majority didn't see a benefit in that, and so that's not one of the conditions before you at this point tonight. Questions were raised by the neighbors concerning the future extension of the Camp Branch Greenway, which would traverse the site, as shown in the earlier slide. There were questions about the status of acquiring a town park site somewhere in this area in the future. Neighbors also had questions about road connections to the site, the types of housing that were envisioned to be built on the site, and whether the project would use the pool that already exists in the Kildare Crossing subdivision. So this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant's representative is here tonight to offer her remarks prior to opening the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Ramage. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates. Staff has presented the details of the proposed rezoning, so I'm just going to briefly talk about the merits of the case and its compliance with the policies. The current zoning is R-30 in Wake County. We are proposing transitional residential conditional use, and we have put the conditions on the property that we feel that will ensure a good fit to the area, and also that the rezoning complies with the town policies. It is located in Cary's Future Growth Framework map as a suburban neighborhood development category, and in this category, primarily the land area designated is either the westernmost area of Cary or the southernmost area. So in this particular case, the property is located in the southernmost area of Cary. In the suburban neighborhood category, single-family detached, small lot and large lots are allowed, and so is townhomes. As staff mentioned, the uses that are being proposed are limited to detached and attached residential along with neighborhood recreation, all of which are permitted in the transitional residential zoning district. The Cary Community Plan talks about the need for additional choices of housing options in Cary. Cary's population has become much more diverse. This part of Cary primarily right now has larger lot residential subdivisions, and what we're doing is looking at proposing additional housing options that would reach a larger segment of the population, including empty nesters, aging seniors, young professionals, young families. Again, it's important that additional options are provided for a full range of citizens. Also, within this particular development, there will be two different housing products, so there will be both attached and detached units. The plan also talks about developing areas that are newly developing and areas that have, are merging as areas where this new development is occurring. One of those locations in the Cary Community Plan is the area south of 1010. Again, pointing out that the majority of the development up to date is larger lot, single-family lots. And I'm here, and there others representing the team that can answer any questions that council might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Top. Now's the time for the public hearing for both the annexation 18A07 and the rezoning 18REZ07. So I'll open that public hearing. I'm not sure if this is the one Mr. Patel was speaking to earlier. If so, I would invite you four. Sorry for the confusion. Welcome back.
I knew I was out of queue there. I represent the homeowners of Killarri Crossing. For the record, from our last meeting, we, the homeowners, were not in agreement with Blue Hill Development to allow them to use the amenities to join our HOA. Someone had called and requested the meeting minutes to be corrected, something Town Council should consider when approving this development. Secondly, we would like the city to rezone the land. We would not like the city to rezone the land to TCRU. If anything, we would like you to reconsider reverting back to R-40, if not leaving it as R-30, but definitely not zoning for a TCRU. This will greatly impact our property values and increase the traffic on Arthur Pierce Road, more so if approved for TCRU. Going from R-40 to R-30 is more acceptable to us because it's at least similar, but going to TCRU is considerably several zones drop off and not a true transition for our I do know that the community across the street has been approved for TCRU, so as far as options, Town of Cary already has several options for different type of residential, so we don't necessarily feel that this particular property should be considered as a TCRU. So we, as the residents, had a meeting, and the general consensus were we would prefer single-family homes versus what they're proposing, which is 75 percent townhomes. We would accept some of the products that they're saying about the duplex, but we just feel that 75 percent is a rather high percentage of townhomes. It pretty much sounds like it's going to be more of a townhome than a single-family We were also in agreement with the 55-plus community proposal that they had initially proposed versus what they're proposing now. And another thing we would like the council to consider is keeping our streets private, especially the connection to Holgard. There's already a connection to the main entrance of the Killarri Crossing, and I'm assuming there's going to be a connection to Dozier, if I'm pronouncing correctly. Dozier Way. So we don't really see a value of connecting Holgard because we feel that if the community is developed and the roads are going to be connected, we are going to see an increased foot traffic, and we are also going to notice at some point that because they may not have some of the amenities that we have, folks are going to come by and try to use our amenities, and there's really no way to stop it. So definitely, we would like you to consider not connecting Holgard, and that's pretty much all I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Thank you.
Anyone else for this public hearing?
Good evening. My name is Vijay Mohan, and I live at 843 De Rosier Drive, part of the same Killarri Crossing property. I think, just to add to what Sherpan Patel just mentioned, there's one particular emphasis that I would like to make. There's a creek, there's a water creek that's running right between the two properties. There's a lot of wildlife, there's a lot of birds, and a lot of habitat that lives out there. Just want to emphasize that, as far as possible, that sector is roughly about 375 to 400 feet of greenery is maintained and left untouched. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Anyone at all? Yes, sir. If anyone else would like to speak at the public hearing, I'd ask that you come over to the stairs so that we know we're waiting for other speakers. Can you move to your left, please? Thank you. Perfect.
Is that better? Okay. Thanks for having us here and giving us the opportunity to speak. I'm also a...
Could you give us your name, please?
Stephen Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
I'm also a resident at Killarri Crossing, which is the neighborhood to the north of surrounding, kind of the perimeter of this proposed site. I'm also speaking on behalf of my parents, who also own a house in that neighborhood, and various other friends that we have. When we all built our houses, which is all fairly recently, over the last few years, we were told by the developer that Cary was looking at it as a site for a park, and we were all very excited about that possibility. Several people whose homes border directly on the, I guess, the northern border of what you're looking at there on the map, were told that their tree lines would be maintained and that, again, the greenway was coming through. So the impression that many people had when they purchased their homes in that neighborhood was not that there was going to be a townhouse development directly outside our front door because the main entrance is right next to where this development will begin. In terms of the Town of Cary providing a variety of different places for people to live at different price points, there are all sorts of mixed-use plans already in motion throughout the town to do exactly that, from condominiums to townhomes. This area, not just our neighborhood, but the neighborhood across the road, next to us, behind us, they're all single-family dwellings. There are no townhouses anywhere near us, which is not to say that this is a good example of an area that should be considered for townhouses, but it's more to exemplify the fact that townhouses would not be in keeping with this particular area. Echoing something that was said earlier, too, to my knowledge, nobody shot down the idea that this be service or an area to service people of 65 or over. I think that was the age that was discussed. But again, townhouses would not be something that we would support having built there. One of the things, in conjunction with both the waterway that goes through there, with the wildlife that roams through that area, with the woodlands that are there, and this historical home, it would be a phenomenal opportunity for the Town of Cary to have a park there and take advantage of that historical home as a feature of the town, countering it being developed for homes at all. But assuming the development for homes moves forward, I would like to say that myself and others would not be in favor of seeing townhomes placed there.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Last call? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. I want to thank our speakers for being here tonight. I hope it's not your last time. I'm glad that you're involved. There's some information I would like to provide for you so that you understand what's going on. The meeting you had earlier was a neighborhood meeting. I don't think any council members were there. Usually, council members don't go to that because that's the opportunity for the developer and the citizens to have a first interaction, to have a discussion, to understand what the needs and wants are, and see if they can come to some kind of agreement before it comes to the public hearing at council. And the council is here at a public hearing to gather all the information that we hear, and then we hear that, and then it's going to go to the Planning and Zoning Board. Now, that's a board made up of citizens that we appointed, that are housewives, anything you can think of, reflection of our population, and they're going to review this, and they're going to make a recommendation, then it'll come back to us, and at that point, that's when we make a decision. So at the very beginning of the process, and the whole process is like four months minimum, so that's where we are. And now I want to go over some of the things that I heard so that there's a little more understanding. The R-30 zoning, if I'm understanding correctly, is a Wake County zoning. And so to come into the city, you have to have a Cary zoning, not a Wake County zoning, so it can't stay at R-30. So if it comes into Cary, it's got to be something. Now, R-40 means 40,000 square foot lots, which is an acre, and we don't have those in our plans except for out toward Chatham County. So it's usually something smaller, and all the neighborhoods around there are much smaller than R-40, probably close to R-20, R-12, R-8. So they're much smaller. Transitional adds to that some of the things that you can do, like smaller frontage, other things that can happen. That's what the transitional is about. Now, the applicant is making a condition, three units to an acre, so if you converted that to the Rs, it'd be more like an R-12. So that's kind of what they're proposing, but don't hold me to that, strictly hold me to that. Single-family homes, that's certainly something that the applicant could consider, but that's not what they're proposing, and we can't dictate that. We can't dictate anything to the applicant. They can only offer, and we have to make our review based on what they've offered. And they're certainly currently presenting townhomes and single-family homes. I heard a comment about private streets. We haven't allowed private streets in many, many years, so I'm thinking that comment was keep our street private from connectivity, but it's a public street. So if it snowed and the town plowed your street, that's a public street. If the town picks up garbage on your street, that's probably a public street. So I'm guessing it's a public street, and the real concern is connectivity. Connectivity is required by our information and our plans and our regulations, and the applicant can apply for a condition that doesn't allow connectivity, very controversial, very time-consuming, and very expensive, and I don't know if they're going to go there. I heard a mention about the creek. The state law requires 50-foot buffers on each side of the creek. Cary has doubled that. Cary requires 100 feet, and that remains until the legislature takes it away from us, and they're trying to do that currently. But right now, we have 100-foot buffers, and we value the creeks as well as you do. The site for park comment, as the staff, I think, talked about, we identified an area, but we haven't purchased any property. So we know in that area we want a park, but we don't know where we would put one yet, and so that's why you don't know where the park is going to go. The tree lines maintain, I'm going to look at Scott Ramage while I say this, I think the requirement is a type A buffer between the development and adjacent, or not?
Correct. Yes.
Type A buffer means opaque. So I'm guessing the tree line will be maintained, or they will have to supplement it. Opaque means you can't see through it. So whatever's there, if you can see through it, they're going to have to add to it to make it where you can't see through that. The 65 and over and 55 and over are both of those numbers. Again, we cannot impose a condition. The applicant would have to offer that condition, and so we have to ignore that condition unless the applicant wants to offer that condition. So as of right now, we're not even considering age-restricted. And so that's kind of the information on the questions, comments I heard. I just want to make sure you understood what we're dealing with, and having said all of that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues and see what they've got. They probably heard more than I did.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. I think that the comments from the residents are pretty valid, you know, about the feeling that they're experiencing of the incongruity of having townhomes right there. So I sympathize with that. There's likely not to have movement on the council as run what the mayor said, and that's the connectivity. What we aspire for is a neighborhood that you want to connect up to, and that you'll be happy when it does connect because connections are really good for all, for your community and the other community. Someday, there's going to be kids living in this neighborhood that you're going to want your kids to be able to walk over to their house and that kind of thing. So the goal here needs to be to create a neighborhood that the other neighborhoods want to connect to, and I think that if we use that as our litmus test, you know, it'll be a success.
Other comments?
I do have one. So one of the things you'll always understand for the citizens that are listening is we're not all the same people. We don't all think the same, and so my comment will be, I actually don't mind having mixed types of housing next to it. We have a lot of neighborhoods that have townhomes next to single-family homes. Caramore, right next to the Stone Creek, comes to mind. There's lots of places for that. What I would suggest to the developer, as they work very closely with the surrounding homes, is finding a way, finding some sort of win-win, maybe putting the single-family homes next to the single-family homes, right, that back up against them. So you have some nice transition between the single-family homes and the townhomes. I actually like the idea of potentially having, you know, actually two homes, like a duplex, if you will, two townhomes next to each other feels like a single family, can feel like a single-family home, and I think that's nice, rather than a whole row of townhomes. I think that feels a little bit better. So I like this idea. I think it has some ways to go to get, you know, a lot of, get my full support, but I just want to give some feedback. I also would love to see a little bit more about, you know, the gathering space is great, that it's, I think it's double what is required. I also am a big connectivity nerd, so I like the fact that there's connectivity between the crossing for many of you who may feel like, oh, my gosh, we're connecting to a whole new neighborhood. Yeah, you are, but it's actually, it's hard to imagine because I absolutely hated connectivity before it happened to my neighborhood, and there's a lot of value to it because it gives you multiple ways out of your neighborhood in an emergency. It makes emergency services come to you quicker. It helps save on gas for police and for fire and for post office delivery. So I know it feels like there, people are entering your neighborhood, but there can be some benefits, and I think now is the time for you to absolutely work with the developer and get the kinds of things that you want, right? Because these are going to be, if it goes through, these are going to be your neighbors, right? So you want to find a win-win that'll make it better for you as well.
Just for clarification, the two roads that appear to be stubbed to the site and from Killarri Crossing, those are stubbed up to the property line, right?
Correct.
Okay. And they were, those roads were stubbed before the houses in Killarri Crossing were occupied, correct?
Probably, yes. I mean, it was with construction of the subdivision.
I mean, I agree with most everything you said, and I agree with a lot of Ms. Robinson's comments about the feel of the neighborhood, but if you didn't want another neighborhood connecting to your neighborhood, you should have bought a house in a different neighborhood that didn't have road stubs to the property adjacent to it. I don't understand the logic why a 55 and over community here like kind and quality townhomes is okay, but not 55 and over wouldn't be. The townstrict buffer rules and such, especially along the stream, will protect that area, provide a nice natural buffer, and provide land and space for wildlife. You know, Killarri Crossing, quite frankly, was a nice wildlife habitat till that neighborhood was built. Everything else has already been said.
Okay. Other comments?
A couple of things. I heard this, the thing that made me cringe is that we were told when we bought there, the developer said, and, gosh, it's like a, it's just, it's awful that you, I mean, there's nothing on paper, there's nothing in the plan, there's, it's not marked as park, it didn't say it was future site of Cary Park, and so we just, I feel like people sometimes get sucked in with a sales pitch, and I feel bad about it, but obviously, we had nothing to do with that. I do, I'm looking at the picture that was back on a previous slide, I think it was on page 35 or slide 35, and I heard that people worried about what was out their front door. Well, I think it's, actually, I was looking at the back door, and there's a big field, and they're, with this proposal, they'd be getting a 40-foot type A buffer. And so I'm seeing the backs of all these houses as I drive down Arthur Pierce that will be buffered with a 40-foot opaque barrier of trees, and of course, between the houses between there. So these people won't be able to see out the street. It's going to make it quieter and better. I know there are people that have trees behind their houses already, but that will also be, need to be maintained. So I think the buffer's a positive thing, and it's actually going to add to it, and I will echo what Ms. Robinson said, I think there's a way to maybe soften this because if they're going to be 25 percent single-family homes, it... because if there are going to be twenty-five percent single-family homes, it might make sense for the single-family homes to abut other single-family homes and make everybody feel better. I think it's a good point.
It was Lori's point. I don't want to take credit for it, but I a hundred percent agree with it and I did want to take an opportunity to say, I agree with Lori. And I'm not against townhomes against single-family homes because we have lots of good examples of that. Sometimes you look at places and you see it's more appropriate than other places. But I agree with you Lori, by Lori's comment.
I'm sorry.
That is okay. That if you're going to have a combination of townhomes and single-family homes, there's a way to lay that out in such a way that will soften the transition into the neighborhood and that should be considered and conditioned.
Mr. Smith, your district.
Yeah, I live there. I live, I live near you all. Haven't heard from you, but I do live out that way. I drive it literally every day as my daughter lives out that way in Holly Springs. That's the way we go to visit. A couple of things that were intriguing. One, I think I was hoping to hear more about how this applicant can actually integrate this development with yours. I was actually surprised to hear, you know, it's your call, but that you don't want to consider, you know, the HOA situation because there's economies of scale there that would help and it would also, HOAs have their own covenants and rules and it's a way for you to manage that on an ongoing basis. One suggestion with opaque buffer, if you're offered fences, I strongly consider that you look at other alternatives. Fences get old very fast. They get in repair very fast and they're not, they're really not a good way to have opaque buffer. You're in a natural area, it's, there's a lot of ways to deal with that opaque buffer and I hope that you'll continue to work with the developer on that. The other points have been made before. You know, I think, you know, I've walked in your shoes, I've, as many of us here have, we got involved with the town because of the developments that impacted our life and our quality of life. So I think there's an opportunity here for a win-win and I think it's close. But I would just be careful what you wish for. Forty, you know, the thirty thousand and the R forty, R thirty, those are really holding patterns. They don't exist anymore. You're not even seeing a lot of that in, in the county anymore. The county has become urban. So look for the things that could enhance your quality of life, could, could help this development be a good neighbor with you and, and maybe you all come out of it ahead. If you've got questions, if you're confused, the staff will help you. And if you feel that you need to reach out to me, I'm a phone call away and I'm just a mile or two down the road.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just like to encourage the applicant to pay attention to and follow the staff recommendations regarding the historic structures. I'm getting some nods, which is good. Those recommendations are found in the staff report itself. And considering the challenges with this site and the structures themselves, I think they're excellent recommendations. And I would hope that by the time this comes back to us for a vote, we'll have some good news along those lines.
Thank you, Mr. Yurha. And speaking of the applicant, for those that are attending, Ms. Topp once worked for the town, has presented in front of us a hundred times or more, who knows?
Oh, a year.
This week.
And the reason she, the reason she keeps coming back is she listens to the citizens and listens to the council. She's good to work with. That's my point. So I would recommend that you continue to work with her because it's in her best interest to work with you. And like my colleagues have said, work and see if you can come to something you can all agree to. If not, that's understandable too, but I mean, I think it's in everyone's best interest if you keep talking, keep working and see if you can come up with a good solution. And Ms. Topp will agree with that, right? Yeah, if she's saying yes. So what happens next is this will go to the planning and zoning board in a month or two. Where's Ms. Granon?
It'll go right now to, yes, the July meeting of the planning board.
July meeting. And they'll give a recommendation from a citizen's perspective. And so we'll have a staff recommendation, we'll have citizen input, we'll have staff input, and from all of that, we can make our decisions. And we'll see it in August, September probably before we'll see it.
Correct.
Right, Mr. Granon?
And the annexation case would, does not need to go to planning board, it'll just come back with the final action.
Exactly. So thanks once again for all of you in attending, attending. And if you do have questions, like Mr. Smith said, give him a call. And if you can't get in touch with him, you can contact any of us. So thank you all for being here. All right, we'll move to our next public hearing. It's five point seven, it's the seventeen REZ thirty-three Macedonia Senior Living Rezoning. And Ms. Katie Dry will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this item. Instead, it's going to go to our planning and zoning board for their review and recommendation in the future. Ms. Dry.
Good evening, council. For your consideration, it's a request to rezone ten point nine-four acres at the northwest corner of Macedonia Road and Jones Franklin Road. Site's currently mostly undeveloped with a few single-family homes on it. These are a few pictures of the site. This is along Macedonia Road. This is one along Jones Franklin Road. It's right next to the Franklin Apartment Complex, which is just to the north of the site. The current zoning for the property is office and institutional and residential multifamily. And the applicant's requesting to rezone the properties to mixed-use district. The mixed-use district is a flexible zoning district, which requires a preliminary development plan to be submitted with the rezoning. This is a copy of the preliminary development plan. The applicant's proposing to place a five-story building on the site with a maximum building height of seventy-five feet. The uses they are proposing are to limit the use of life care community or age-restricted multifamily use with a maximum of two hundred and fifty units. They propose some architectural conditions specifying that the roof would have the appearance of a mansored, gable, hip or shed style. They are proposing their stormwater control measure. You can see that here at the intersection of Macedonia and Jones Franklin. Community gathering space of eight thousand square feet. They're proposing a pad for a future transit stop. At this point, there's not a transit stop at this location, but they've worked with the town staff and are preparing the pad in the event that a transit stop's located here in the future. The modifications effective with this rezoning request include the removal of one champion tree. They are also asking not to apply the town requirement for an internal street network connecting Jones Franklin and Macedonia. You would still be able to traverse the site from Jones Franklin. You can see the entrance here over to Macedonia, but the getting through the site would be through the parking lot rather than through a street network. And they're proposing to set the parking at one point three nine spaces per unit. The applicant has submitted justifications for each of these requests and they're included in the staff report. As noted in the staff report, there were four champion trees on, or four trees on the site that were originally considered as candidates for champion trees. The applicant has submitted an arborist report for the grouping of three willow oak trees along Jones Franklin Road. These are no longer considered champion trees due to their health and other factors. There is a fifty-four inch water oak that does meet the criteria for a champion tree. One of the modifications effective with this rezoning request is to remove this tree. The applicant has submitted two arborist reports detailing concerns with the health of the tree. And since the writing of the staff report after additional review, we believe that the tree does still currently meet the LDO requirements for a champion tree. However, at the same time, we acknowledge the applicant's concern and believe that on balance, it is appropriate to approve the modification to remove the tree and apply and provide replacements in accordance with LDO. Staff has evaluated the case using the Imagine Cary Community Plan. A preliminary analysis finds the following applicable policies. First, the site's located in a destination center, which is intended to contain higher-density housing, mid-rise office and mixed-use development. There's opportunity for a future transit stop at this location and it's within close proximity to nearby shopping and office. You can see from this map here, this is a future growth framework map. The site is within the destination center. It's on the edge of the destination center and the properties across Jones Franklin Road to the south are within the city of Raleigh's planning jurisdiction. Their future land use map designates these areas for residential development just across the street here. We also noted that the site's in close proximity to shopping opportunities as well as office. When looking at the Town of Cary's GIS maps, it doesn't appear that the site is impacted by stream buffers. However, field determination of that will occur at the time of the development plan review. When looking at the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan, there's a street side trail which would be built to the north of the site. The site is located at Macedonia Road, which is at Collector Street, according to the transportation plan, and Jones Franklin Road, which is the thoroughfare. Notification of the public hearing was sent to properties within eight hundred feet of the site in preparation for the public hearing tonight. The site was also posted in accordance with the Town of Cary's land development ordinance. At the neighborhood meeting, there were no attendees other than the applicant who attended. Staff has received a few phone calls and emails with questions about the project. At this point, staff has not heard any opposition expressed to the project to date. So this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to share comments and following that, staff will be available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Good evening, mayor, members of the town council. My name is Neil Gosh. I'm with the Morningstar Law Group at four twenty-one Fifth Hill in Raleigh. I'm here tonight representing DeWitt Carolinas for this rezoning request. Let me first thank staff for their presentation. We have worked thoroughly with them to get the project to this point and are very excited about the project. We also have in attendance Mr. Stephen Viti, he's with the applicant group. Mr. Robbie Bell with B and K, he's the site engineer for the project. And we have Mr. Phil Crump, he is an arborist who has evaluated the site. As staff mentioned, our request would allow us to build two hundred and fifty units. The use was a little tricky. The applicant wants to build what is typically known as a concrete care facility. However, the Cary LDO doesn't define that as a use. So we worked with staff to figure out what the use might better be described as under the Cary LDO. And that's why the request is for life care community and/or age-restricted multifamily. But as you can see on the PDP, the site is planned for one primary building. Clearly, our project is age-restricted. This is a growing demographic in Cary. A two thousand fifteen study by the Aging Issues Task Force here in Cary found that five thousand Cary residents turn sixty-five years old every year. Now, at that time, in that snapshot, the report did find that the town was servicing that population pretty well, but also found that, you know, in the pipeline, it was very evident that there was not enough housing for that growing population. And I think that explains some of the guidance found within the Cary Community Plan. Specifically, the Cary Community Plan encourages age-targeted or age-restricted projects to develop around areas where there are goods and services. And that's because access to those are, that's important to our aging population. I think too often, with new development specifically, it's centered around millennials, but more senior, but the more senior population is a rapidly growing demographic in the Town of Cary and it cannot go unaddressed. This area, as was mentioned, is saturated with retail-type uses and, and office and non-residential uses. And, you know, crossroads, tri- on, those are less than half a mile away. You can walk to them from the site. Actually, the proximity of this site to those retail areas makes this an ideal location for senior living. It makes it an ideal location for any living, but DeWitt has, is choosing to prioritize senior living. As was mentioned, the site is in a destination center. However, within that overall destination center, this is on the edge towards a more residential area. Generally speaking, there's a good mix of uses in this destination center. However, it is mostly horizontally integrated. As part of that horizontal approach, we think the site makes sense for residential use, which is what we're proposing. It is, the site is adjacent to an existing multifamily development and it's just down the street from Brierton. Keeping that in mind, we've designed the site so that the parking field doesn't dominate the frontage and we think that's going to create a softer approach for the residential areas that are not in the destination center. That allows us to do the horizontal integration in a respectful way. I think, I think DeWitt has really taken care to be a good neighbor here. As staff mentioned, we do have three requests for minor modifications. I think the first one comes as no surprise. A lot of the multifamily projects here in Cary often request a parking reduction and I think the town right now is reviewing those parking ratios and I assume will reduce them. But we are requesting a parking ratio of one point three nine spaces per dwelling unit as opposed to the two point two five spaces per dwelling unit. We also are requesting a modification to remove a single champion tree from the site. As I mentioned, we have Mr. Phil Crump and he'll speak more on it later, but I did want to speak generally about it. The tree, by all counts, is a, is a beautiful tree. However, we've had two arborists look at it and they both came to the same conclusion for generally the same reasons, that the tree is not a good candidate for preservation. Primarily, that's because there are two major limbs which have already died and the tree shows signs of disease. But I will let Mr. Crump speak to that later. He can speak more eloquently about that than I can. But at the end of the day, the request is for a removal of one champion tree on the site. The final modification is to allow the site to be developed without making the required connection between Jones Dairy and Macedonia. As Katie mentioned, there still will be a connection. We just, you know, given that it's a age-restricted project that we're looking at, we didn't want to incentivize a cut-through movement. And allowing us to, to this modification doesn't prevent the connectivity from happening. There will be a connection. So if there ever is an accident or blockage at that intersection, emergency vehicles will be able to go through the site to get around that problem if that's what they need to do. But we don't want to encourage necessarily cut-through traffic through the site. So as I stated, we are excited about the project. We think it makes a lot of sense given the demographics in Cary and I think it's going to be a real benefit in this destination center. We do have members from the team available for any questions that you might have and we look forward to your feedback. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now's the time for the public hearing, seventeen REZ thirty-three, and I would invite our first
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Phil Crump. I'm an ISA certified arborist. I have a degree in horticultural science in North Carolina State University. I have four related minors, including forestry management, soil science, wetland assessment and environmental science attached to my degree. Have over forty-one years' experience in the tree care industry and associated industries. I regularly provide consulting services regarding trees and woody plants to individuals, businesses, insurance companies and government agencies, including the state of North Carolina and the federal government. I've served on multiple committees throughout my career in my industry. Two in particular were the Town of Cary Tree Board when I was a resident of Cary and the North Carolina Executive Mansion Landscape Committee, where my task was to evaluate the trees on that property. Maintaining certifications as a certified arborist requires any arborist to continually educate themselves through approved CEUs, which are continuing education units. One of the most frequently offered CEU courses is hazard tree evaluation and there's a reason for that. Tree failure can be catastrophic and when trees fail, the public can be harmed or killed. Homes and other property can be damaged, destroyed. Roads can be blocked. Accidents can occur. Power lines can be torn down. And the health and safety of trees within our community are of primary concern. When people are injured by trees, particularly lawsuits frequently ensue. And I've been involved in a number of those over the years. The Town of Cary Champion Tree Program- The Town of Cary Champion Tree Program, Champion Tree Status, is almost solely based on tree diameter, meaning the size of the trunk. And by that standard, the tree in question on this property is a champion tree. The process enacted tree preservation by all standards should begin with a proper and thorough evaluation of the tree with regard to hazard, safety, and liability. Aesthetics alone cannot constitute a judgment on a tree. Now, it's my understanding at this point in time that, that the Town of Cary post has had a third person look at the tree. I'm not, that's what I heard. And there's additional concurrence, so at this point in time, potentially three arborists have looked at the tree, for sure, too. And we're in concurrence with each other, and that's what the purpose was of the request by the town. The general concept of tree preservation is relatively simple. It can include any tree or group of trees of any size, and it's just simplest form. It just means that a tree is left untouched. But when it is directed specifically at the largest and oldest trees, it is imperative that more scrutiny be applied to all concerns affected by preserving such a tree, such as how will this tree be impacted by its new environment? How will it be affected by any reduction or changes within its current root zone? What is the age of the tree? What is the vitality of the tree? And how do the current conditions of the tree present any safety or liability concerns? The distinction I'm trying to make here is that if you're looking at a tree that's small and vigorously growing, it's going to adapt to its new environment. And when you take a fifty-four-inch diameter tree and try and change its environment, the results aren't always what you'd hoped. And that, that's always a concern. So you're, you're immediately, by setting aside these trees, you're looking at the oldest and potentially the most fragile population of trees on a property. And so that, that, that needs to be considered more thoroughly, is what I'm trying to say. As part of the development review process, Town of Cary planners requested that DeWitt Carolinas have a certified arborist identify, measure, and inspect any potential champion trees on this project. DeWitt hired two arborists, as I stated. I'm the second.
Mr. Crump, I'm sorry, your time is expired.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Anyone at all? We'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for feedback before we send it to Planning and Zoning. The only comment I would make is I live about a mile, mile and a half from this site, and lived there for over a quarter of a century, and contrary to what I heard earlier, it's not saturated with office. It's saturated with retail and multifamily by far. So you're going to have to convince me that this multifamily is a good idea, because the only office over there is the Board of Education, those buildings right over there. Other than that, there is no office over there. It's all retail and multifamily, and it's, I don't know how many square miles of that. So in my opinion, you've got a long hill, a big hill to climb to get my, my vote. So other comments before we send it on?
I would just counterpoint that age-restricted family, housing for families is in demand and meets a need in our community. I don't, I don't remember hearing that the applicant said that there was a saturated...
Saturated with office and retail.
I heard retail. Maybe he did say op, but I heard retail.
Okay.
Which I would wholeheartedly agree with, which is your point. I'd like to know more about the road, the connectivity that was proposed that they're asking that we not do. Where would that go? Can you just like take your mouse and show me where that might happen?
The town's ordinance requires that when you have a property of a certain size at the intersection of two thoroughfares or a thoroughfare and a collector, that you have a road connecting the thoroughfare and the collector.
Okay.
However, they're requesting to, to not have a road. You would traverse it rather through this parking lot.
Okay, so it's not looking to connect to an adjacent property. It's just looking to provide another road should something happen at the intersection?
That's correct.
Or another way for motorists to avoid traffic. Okay. That's all I've got for now.
Other comments?
If I remember correctly, Prince Drive, which is about where it says pad for future transit stop, that little road there, that was, we took that road that was supposed to be Collector Road run through the property, and it was removed at one of our, maybe it was a year ago, if that's correct. If that's, I'm getting nods. So that was removed a year ago. So we had the, if, if it needed connectivity for traffic reasons, yes, their Prince Drive, if it needed connectivity for traffic reasons, it would have not been removed. So I don't see the need for that, and I just see the need for emergency services. But I, and I see the reason not to have a collector if it's, to encourage cut-through is not the purpose of the ordinance. It's just connectivity, and if it's, if they can get out on Macedonia or, or Jones Franklin, to me, it, it, it makes sense to go through a parking lot. My, my comment.
Any other comments?
Regarding the tree, as much as I'd like to see that tree remain, it's a beautiful tree. I read the Mr. Crump's report, I hope most of you did, before the meeting. It's, it's like a college education in champion trees. It's one of the best arborist reports I've, I've seen, and it's very convincing to me why the tree probably could not remain. So I urge you all to read that before it comes time for us to, to vote.
Other comments?
Just to add a comment about the, the parking lot that's across the street on Jones Franklin Road. I'm a little concerned about the, the traffic there. I believe there's a median or, or there as well. How, where exactly is the entrance?
Let me see if I can find a good aerial to, to look at for that. Unfortunately, it's not close enough to get a good look, but we can look into that and provide more detail in the staff report moving forward.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the, since there won't be a road, and I, I don't necessarily see the need for an internal road, because I, I agree with Mr. Francis. You don't necessarily need to, you don't want to provide an easy cut-through at that corner, but I am concerned about, you know, people being able to get into the property and get out safely.
Noted.
That's it.
Okay. Other comments? All right. We'll see this after it's gone to Planning and Zoning for their review. All right, we go to our eighth public hearing. It's seventeen REZ twenty-three Village at the Park PDD Amendment Phase Four B. Council will not take action on this tonight, but we're going to refer to our Planning and Zoning Board, and once again, Ms. Trye will present the item.
This is a request to rezone fifteen point nine four acres at seventy-six fifty-five Kit Creek Road and fifty-three twenty-nine NC Highway fifty-five. The property is undeveloped. It's at the corner of Kit Creek Road and Green Level Church Road and touches Highway fifty-five on the east. I'd like to note that this was a, a request that was heard by town council at a public hearing back in January of this year, and the applicant has since added a request to reduce the parking ratio to one point six eight spaces per dwelling. And once a planned development district rezoning case has been presented at a town council public hearing, the Town of Cary's LDO requires any new conditions submitted by the applicant to be more restrictive. And reducing the parking, parking ratio is considered less restrictive, and so therefore the applicant has elected to restart the case so that, so that the condition to reduce the parking ratio can be included. So I'll try to do my best as we go through the present, or as I go through the presentation to point out any new elements of the, the case that you haven't seen when the case was previously presented back in January. The current zoning for the site is PDD major. It's part of the Village at the Park Plan Development District. It's identified as Phase Four B within the Village of the Park. The allowed uses on Phase Four B are retail, office, hotel, and multifamily unit. Part PDD, when it was originally approved, was intended to be a mixed-use community which incorporated retail, office, and residential uses in a walkable environment. The limits of the PDD are shown here in yellow, and due to market forces, including several nearby retail and office developments, Village at the Park has been amended several times over the past fifteen years, and current land uses within the PDD consist of two multifamily developments, a gas station with a convenience store, and an elementary school. This rezoning seeks to amend Phase Four B of the Village of the Park PDD to allow for a maximum of three hundred multifamily dwellings as well as, or townhomes, and fifteen to nineteen thousand square feet of office and retail. So with this revision, in addition to the uses are proposing the building heights for non-residential uses to be thirty-five feet and sixty feet for residential uses, there are, in addition to transportation improvements which are primarily associated with the site access, there are several off-site improvements that are being offered, including a northbound left-turn lane at NC fifty-five and Kit Creek Road, as well as improvements at Green Level Church Road and Wake Road and Green Level Church Road and Stonewater Glen. I'd like to highlight the changes that have occurred to this since you first saw the case in January. The applicants have introduced a new use type, so in addition to multifamily, another use type could be townhomes. They've also included a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet for the office retail component, which would ensure a mixture of uses with this, with this project. They've also added a transportation improvement in north, a second northbound left-turn lane at NC fifty-five and Kit Creek Road. With the, with the revision, they've also specified that a minimum of sixty percent of the multifamily units would be one-bedroom units, and with that, the parking ratio would be one point six eight spaces per unit. For the townhome component, a minimum of fifty percent of the townhomes would have two-car garages. Staff has evaluated the case using the Imagine Cary Community Plan. First, we note, looking at the Future Growth Framework map, that it's within the mixed neighborhood development category, which includes neighborhoods in the northwestern part of Cary located within two miles of the Research Triangle Park. The mixed neighborhoods are intended to have a substantial variety of housing types and densities. The predominant land use types will typically be a mix of residential detached townhomes and multifamily homes. Applicable policies to this rezoning come from the Live, Work, and Shape chapters. When looking at the Live chapter, we will be analyzing the case with policies that call for expanding housing choices and a variety of housing options. When looking at the Work chapter, staff notes that future residents and workers at this location might enjoy a quality of life benefit by being able to live adjacent to employment in Research Triangle Park. Looking at Policy Eight, which speaks to ensuring that adequate land is available to develop employment uses, it is noted that the current allowed uses for Track Four B include eighty-eight thousand square feet of office, seventy-eight thousand square feet of retail, as well as hotel and multifamily uses. And the proposed rezoning reduces the combined office retail space to a maximum of nineteen thousand square feet. Looking at the town's GIS maps, the site is impacted by stream buffers. The site's also impacted by a natural gas line easement that traverses the site. The easement can present some development challenges, and although there are development activities which can occur along the natural gas pipeline easement, if approved by the pipeline company, which is the easement holder, these types of improvements can include parking lots and driveways with an easement, but generally not buildings. According to the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Master Plan, street-side trails are proposed along NC fifty-five, Kit Creek Road, and Green Level Church Road. These trails have been constructed along Highway fifty-five and Kit Creek Road, and any remaining gaps will be constructed with the corresponding road frontage for the site. The plan has also identified a future community park for the Town of Cary property located zero point four miles to the south. Looking at the transportation plan, Green Level Church Road, Kit Creek, and NC fifty-five are all thoroughfares, and there is a transit route that runs, a go-triple transit route that runs along NC fifty-five. The traffic study was completed for this rezoning case with, which evaluated intersections within one mile of the project boundary. The applicant has offered to complete most of the transportation improvements at the intersections you see highlighted here in green. In addition to the improvements at the site drives for the development, the applicant has offered to complete improvements at Green Level Church Road, Stonewater Glen Lane, and Green Level Church Road and Wake Road. They've also offered a second northbound left-turn lane and signal modification at Highway fifty-five and Kit Creek Road, and this would provide additional capacity and satisfy some of the area's traffic needs. The neighborhood meeting for this case was held back in September of last year, and there were no attendees at this meeting. Since then, the town has received just a few calls and questions about the proposed use, and some of those questions have been about the town regulations, what the use is, what the process is, and in general, we've heard support expressed for the project. The notices were sent to properties within the site. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to share comments, and following the public hearing, we'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd invite the applicant forward at this time for their remarks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the council, Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group, here on behalf of the applicant. Katie's done an excellent job describing the request, and as she mentioned, this is kind of an unusual process that we followed, because we went to a public hearing. We actually never made it to the Planning and Zoning Board before coming back to you because of the nature of the changes. When I made my presentation to you last time, my presentation was apparently so compelling and so complete that I drew no questions or comments from either the community or the council, which has to be a first for me. And so as a result of that, I'm going to leave that alone and focus just on the changes that have transpired since the case was before you, and talk about why. And I'm, I'm running through them on page eight of the staff report, the numbered changes. First, the staff had requested we consider adding to the residential offerings in the community, so townhomes has been added as a permitted use. That was in response to a staff comment. As the developer of the site, or the applicant, has been working with the builder community about how the site would develop out, the apartment community has expressed a concern associated with the town's standard parking requirements, and so as you all are seeing in a number of multifamily deals, the parking ratios are being sought to be reduced to one point six eight dwelling spaces per unit, if I could. And part of that, and, and so the third condition relates to that, and it is, is part of the justification for that reduction, and that is the sixty, sixty percent of the multifamily units are going to be one-bedroom units. I have brought this slide up because you see that Research Triangle Park on the, on the far right-hand side, the anticipation is a, a lot of folks that will be, living in this community will be working in RTP, which is just around the corner. Condition number four is a condition that certainly was not one that was offered without some hesitation on behalf of the applicant. The transportation staff had expressed some current concern associated with the northbound left-hand turn movement at Green Level Church, excuse me, at fifty-five and Kit Creek Road. It's an expensive improvement to make as part of this project, but, you know, we spent a lot of time working with the staff, kind of working through the transportation recommendations that the staff had, and ultimately were able to get comfortable that that's an improvement that can be made as part of this project. So that, that's something that has also changed. And lastly, the staff had asked if we would consider providing a minimum amount of non-residential development on the site, and so that fifteen thousand square foot number has been added to the, added to the proposal that is before you all. So with that, I will conclude my remarks, and I guess we'll be at Planning and Zoning Board next month, and at some point this summer, we'll see you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Now's the time for the public hearing, seventeen REZ twenty-three Village at the Park PDD Amendment Phase Four B, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And opening up the council members for remarks, questions, comments? Yes, sir?
I have a, kind of a technical question, and it refers back to the screen that talked about the building heights. And we're going with thirty-five-foot non-residential and sixty-foot residential. What happens if they put residential above non-residential?
I'll have to, I can look into that, and I will have an answer in the staff report as this moves forward.
Because if we're encouraging that, we certainly... Because if we're encouraging that, we certainly wouldn't want to discourage it by making it to thirty-five. But I'm just technically trying to figure out, because then they'd have to come back and ask for another exception. They tried to be vertically mixed, because it seems like you'd want to be residential on the height and begin, that would mean like maybe non-residential up to thirty-five, and then you go to six, I don't know what you do. But I just have a concern there that we don't want to dis, we don't want to make it difficult to mix vertically when it might be appropriate and would really help in their planning. And I just want to make sure they don't run into a hiccup.
Other comments?
No.
Okay. This will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation, and we'll see you back in a couple of months. And that takes us to our last public hearing. Is the five-point-nine on the agenda, Act, Act Five, we'll call it Act Five, Land Development Ordinance and Town Code Amendments. Deputy Manager Russ Overdon will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this item tonight, but it's going to our Planning and Zoning Board. Ms. Rover.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before you tonight is a public hearing for Act Five, the Land Development Ordinance and Code Amendments for the Planning and Zoning Board Membership and Responsibilities. Quite a mouthful. Three things you really need to know for tonight's public hearing is that we're going to recap what we discussed at our February Council Staff Retreat, show you some membership examples from other communities, as well as present options for P and Z changes for tonight's public hearing. So you'll recall at the February Council Staff Retreat, you asked for a topic on the Planning and Zoning Board in a post-Imagine Carry day. Lisa Glover, Chief Kane, and myself gave you a presentation on the unique roles of the council staff, and specifically the Planning and Zoning Board. At the retreat, we talked about how the Imagine Carry Community Plan is new. It had only been adopted in the last year. And how we're evolving in a maturing community. We're moving away from greenfield development into more infill and redevelopment community with less than seventeen percent land availability. Things are a little different now than they were before Imagine Carry. We used to have a land use plan, and that land use plan is mapped-based, and it was down to the specific or individual parcel. It was not very flexible, and there are frequent comprehensive plan amendments and no staff recommendations. Now with Imagine Carry, we have a policy-based plan. We have sixty-eight of them, to be exact. And they're based in our values and our future aspirations for the town. We have a future growth framework map, and staff gives recommendations. As we got into the decision-making process in our discussion at the retreat, we talked to you about the three distinct and very different roles in the planning process by the staff, which is a very technical role, gives technical analysis. The P and Z Board, which really looks at the consistency with the plan. And then ultimately, the council role, looking at reasonable, whether a project's reasonable in the public interest, which is largely a values-based decision. To highlight the P and Z discussion further, we really asked one question, or talked about the one question that the P and Z really Board has to consider. And is that zoning map or text amendment consistent with our comprehensive plan? We talked briefly about, you know, the legal requirements with the Planning and Zoning Board, and they're really very simple. We have to have a P and Z Board. We have to have an ETJ member by law. And they have to, at a minimum, determine plan consistency. So out of all of that discussion at the retreat, there are four specific areas that you asked us to look into. And Mary is now going to lead you through that discussion.
Thank you, Russ, and good evening, Mayor and council. So the first change that we have proposed is for the vote of the Planning and Zoning Board to be solely on whether or not a requested rezoning case is consistent with the Imagine Carry Community Plan. This is a change that emphasizes the statutory role of Planning and Zoning Boards in North Carolina, and it focuses the Board's evaluation on the policy considerations of the plan. With that change, the Board would no longer make a recommendation specifically on a zoning case as to whether or not to approve or deny that case, but merely on the important question of the plan consistency and that connection back to the Imagine Carry Community Plan. The second change we've proposed is for council to conduct all of the public hearings related to the rezoning cases. And this would apply to any text amendments to the Land Development Ordinance as well. It was noted at your retreat that the greatest value of the Board came in its deliberation discussion of issues and the perspective that the Board members were able to provide as individual citizens, and not so much in representing the specific viewpoints of a neighborhood or the larger community, as that got more into the role of council in receiving that information. So if there were changes to the request after your initial public hearing, there would be the, we have provided the option in the revised text for a second public hearing to occur before the council. And that would, that could occur after the Planning and Zoning Board recommendation on the general consistency. And then following any public hearing, a second public hearing by council, you could either take action at that same meeting, or you could continue to a later meeting if you felt it was something that needed further discussion and you wished to deliberate more. Or you could even refer the case back to Planning and Zoning Board for them to continue discussion. But with the important point there being, it would be totally your choice as to the level of changes and how you chose to proceed to get the information you need for your best decision. With regard to the ETJ representation, there is a statutory requirement to have an ETJ member, and that is for any jurisdiction that has ETJ area, not all do. And that member is required to vote at a minimum on any case that involves the ETJ. Cary's representation on this has changed over the years. In nineteen eighty-three, we had ten Board members on the Planning and Zoning Board, and five of them represented the ETJ. By two thousand and three, there were two ETJ members. And then that, in two thousand and seven, this was reduced to one. And this, I just tell you, this is, this reduction has corresponded over the time with the expansion of our corporate limits as we have grown so much during this period. We propose at this time that the ETJ member vote only on items within the ETJ consistent with the requirements of the general statutes. In addition to the rezoning cases that would be in the ETJ, this would include all of the LDO text amendments, since those changes potentially affect all property within our planning jurisdiction. And the final change we proposed is to the number of Board members. The general statutes require a minimum of three Planning and Zoning Board members. We did survey a variety of cities and towns across the state and found that the numbers ranged with these jurisdictions from five to ten. And the number was not directly correlated with the size of the jurisdiction. It seems each community determines the best fit based on its own unique needs and character. We have proposed reducing the number of P and Z members from nine to seven. We feel that this number aligns with the number of council members that we have. And also, it provides more of an opportunity at the meetings to engage in a deeper discussion of the issues that come up, to get that depth of comment that we think will be valuable to you in making your decisions and receiving those perspectives. So that concludes staff's presentation. And following the public hearing, we'll be available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. Now it's time for the public hearing for Act Five, Land Development Ordinance and Town Code Amendments. And I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing for the staff amendments to regulations we have regarding the Planning and Zoning Board. If you're going to speak, we need you up here so we can get it on record. We're required to have comments on record. And if you would once again state your name. She has your card.
My name is George Burrell. And we went through a Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and I was appalled at the behavior of the members of your Planning and Zoning Board. This may not be about the rules and regulations, but I think it portrays how your Planning and Zoning Board appeared to me a very knowledgeable person about real estate, et cetera. I don't know if it's appropriate to continue. I was appalled. Democracy is one thing, and everybody can say what they want to say. But the chairman made no effort whatsoever to contain the statements of the members to issues about planning and zoning. One member of that board said, "Ah, this man wants to try and make more money. I'm all for that, therefore I will vote to allow the Planning and Zoning for the approval for this measure." That's appalling. Planning and zoning is about the future of our town. Not giving somebody the opportunity to try and make more profit. A number of the members spoke against the matter, but said, "Oh, well, I'm just going to vote for it." The chairman, the last, it was four-four, the chairman was the last to speak. And he said, all number of, you can get it on your recordings, what they said. But he said a number of things which were negative to approving the motion. And then he said, "Oh, well, I'm still going to vote for it, because that'll just kick it back to the council, and they can do whatever they want with it." So he said, and quite a number of your members said a number of things going in one direction and voted the other way. That is terrible. I don't know if it's the chairman's remit to keep his committee members focused on what they should be talking about and not talking about the things they should not be talking about. If you tolerate, I don't know where your boundaries of toleration are, but you really want to get on top of that group. Maybe you need to get a chairman who has, wants to control what they say for the benefit of the town of Cary. I think that would be a great improvement. I don't know if you can, how you can get this into your rules and regulations, but it seems how you select members to be on this committee is extremely lax if you tolerate those sort of people to be on that sort of committee. Okay? It's from experience, coming from outside and seeing something. I'm giving it to you, it's up to you to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? We'll close the public hearing. I have a question for staff. In the comments, you said the P and Z, or the recommendation P and Z, will only vote on the consistency with the Cary Community Plan. How's that different from staff recommendation?
Well, the staff recommendation, the staff recommendation is coming from a more technical standpoint and pulling all of the, looking at all the various policies, trying to make an assessment of which ones may apply and provide that technical guidance and feedback. The Planning and Zoning Board role would be more of looking at that, some of that same information, but from a perspective of a citizen, an individual citizen as a Board member. So it is from a different perspective. But it would be having more of a focus on the individual representation from the citizen as opposed to, on those, from the standpoint of consistency from that viewpoint.
And as a risk of saying too much, because it's going to the Planning and Zoning Board, and I don't want to muddy the waters. I think that might be difficult. That's what I want to hear out of that, anyway. Opening up to council members for questions and comments. Keep it in mind that this is going to the P and Z for them to review recommendations for the P and Z before we see it again.
It's going to be an interesting discussion at their meeting, I'm sure. I would like to respond to Mr. Burrell's comments, because, I mean, I was at the meeting and I've actually watched it a couple of times. I mean, I think his concern was regarding a specific request that we will be considering shortly. What I remember from that meeting was Board members expressing maybe some personal concerns or expressing feelings, but at the end of the day, finding the proposal consistent and actually doing their job as a Planning and Zone Board member and putting some of those personal feelings aside and making a recommendation on whether or not it's consistent with the Cary Community Plan. I can see how somebody who maybe has a different opinion than the Board member or a personal bias toward that particular case might feel differently. So I'm not saying anyone's wrong. I'm just saying that you could interpret it a different way. I do have my own comments and opinions on what is being proposed. However, if you would like to not hear those and not maybe bias the P and Z Board...
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of. I mean, you can do whatever you want, but I would, I'd really like to have, P and Z have a shot at this before we do that. Just to... If y'all want to, go ahead.
It's an interesting point.
I'm sorry, you've spoken, we can't allow you to speak again, I'm sorry. Other council members, if you want to speak...
I just, I'll withhold. I just, I'm curious to what they have to say.
And it's kind of rare that we do this, but the fact of the matter is, we're talking about P and Z in the public hearing, and it's going to P and Z, and so...
Regarding the ETJ, I agree with staff recommendation. It's one thing that's always baffled me over the years is how a non-Cary citizen can have a say in, or an official say in things that happen in Cary. But I've never understood how somebody that doesn't live in Cary can have a vote on something that happens in downtown, for example. I do have a little bit of concern or question on if we have an odd number of Board, but it's a topic that's not in the ETJ, and that ETJ member can't vote, then all of a sudden, you've got an even number of Board. So you could possibly have a tie.
And I think that's okay.
And that's okay, because what we typically look for is what the discussion was about and their comments, not necessarily the vote. So maybe if we remove the actual vote, then we solve all that problem. I actually like the membership number, going down to seven. I've been on the P and Z Board for a couple of years. It always seemed like a lot of people with a lot of opinions at the same table. We have seven council members. I never really understood why we need nine or more Planning and Zoning Board members. I think the public hearing does belong in front of council. I think we did something, we, our goal, what we tried to do years ago, giving the P and Z Board a public hearing, was admirable.
Yeah, it was good intentions.
Good intentions. But the problem we ran into is it politicized the Board. And that's not what we want them for. We want them to determine, is it consistent or not? Does the use make sense or not? You bring ten, twenty people up to a podium, that changes the dynamic of the discussion in the meeting. And I think that just didn't work out the way we wanted to. So I have no problem bringing that second public hearing back to council. This is the body politic, this is where it belongs. That's it.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that is, is just to layer on from what you said. I always felt... said, I always felt a bit bad for the citizens that went to the public hearing at P and Z and then weren't able to speak again because we didn't have a public hearing at council. So they didn't get an opportunity, they of course could do their, you know, public speaks out, but they didn't get their five minutes in front of council, in front of the people that elected them, unless, assuming that we all watched however many hours of the Planning and Zoning Board. So I always felt that they were a little gypped, right, that they, they were, it didn't feel right, right, to have that, that passioned and impassioned citizen speaking to the people that they didn't elect who were appointed, and they weren't able to speak to the people that they elected. So I, I agree with you.
Any other comments?
My only question, and I look forward to the feedback we get, get from them, is the same as, as you had. I'm still trying to get the sense of the distinction between the board's action on being consistent or not with the Magic Cary versus the staff recommendation. So I'm, while you were going through that, I'm trying to go through my mind, give me some examples, you know, trying to figure out, I don't want to, you know, I want this to be a viable board that's active and gives us that citizen perspective. I mean, you know, I've, I've watched that, that session you were talking about, Don, earlier, and I, I was, you know, regardless of what my personal opinion is, I kind of applauded the behavior that night. I think that's what we've been trying to do. We've been trying to get our, a random group that we appointed, giving us the citizen perspective. But it's not their burden to have to please every citizen out there, there's 162,000 of them. And I, I thought, even though they, you could argue they went off the reservation a couple of times, they, they had good dialogue that night, great dialogue, and I thought, that's the stuff that helps us make informed decisions later. So, you know, getting back to, I think, you know, what you're saying about the seven members in the ETJ, I'm not going to repeat it all, I think we're kind of on, on the same page there. I just want in my mind to understand, you know, that final piece about what that deliberation's going to be at that P and Z meeting, what's the value add from the citizen perspective? You know, I'm almost questioning, is it a, is the goal to be consistent with the Magic Cary, or is the goal to give their opinion from a citizen perspective of what their point of view or concern, or whatever it is, to the Magic Cary? You know, it may be something that time has evolved, and they may say it's not consistent, but we, here's why we think that's good. So, you know, so is that, you know, is that a recommendation? You know, I don't want to, I think there's a nuance there that I, I'd like to see vetted with their feedback, you know, before it comes back to us, just that one little piece.
Anybody else? Okay. This will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation.
Because the appointments are, we're going through the appointment process this year in September, we will be taking this to a P and Z work session next week, and then on to a, the P and Z meeting, so that it will come back to you in July.
Okay.
So that that decision can be made in time to make preparations if there are changes for the next appointment.
Okay, very good, thank you. Before we get into discussion items, we've been at this for over two and a half hours, let's take a very short break and try to hold it to five minutes, and we'll be right back.
And we'll move to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is seventeen R E Z oh four Weston Plan Development District O and I, three amendment, and we'll hear a report from Assistant Planning Director Deborah Grannan, followed by a recommendation from our P and Z Chair, Council may take action. Ms. Grannan?
Good evening, Council. For your consideration this evening is action on a P D D amendment for a portion of the Weston PUD, tract O and I three, which is also known as Weston Manor. As you may recall, this is the case of the bridge that was built, damaged, rebuilt, washed out, and now no longer exists. There was a zoning condition that was part of the Weston P D D when this property was rezoned from office use to residential use. The applicant provided at that time a condition that said there would be an internal sidewalk network and a connection to the Black Creek Greenway by way of a six-foot asphalt trail and a bridge. Well, the asphalt trail is still there, and that still serves the H O A in connection to their stormwater management pond. The bridge no longer exists, so they had an option of either being faced with a zoning violation or trying to rebuild a very expensive bridge that could not traverse the stormwater area, the floodplain area, the stream, and all the storm events that were taking place. So, the forty-one homeowners in the neighborhood and the H O A came forward with a rezoning petition and asked that this condition be removed because of the expense. There is an alternative route to get to the Black Creek Greenway by going south along existing sidewalks and going through North Cary Park. Takes a little bit longer, but it's less than a mile to get there. So, staff's recommendation to remove this zoning condition was for approval, and the Planning and Zoning Board also had a recommendation for approval by a vote of seven to one, and Board Chair, Mr. Evangelista, is here to provide some commentary on that discussion.
Hello. Welcome. This will be very quick. The operative word by most of the members of the board was no-brainer. This looked like a pretty easy thing to do. The applicant had tried to replace the bridge one, in fact, they did replace it once, so there was good faith effort there. One member voted against it simply because nothing was offered in return, that we were granting this, what he thought was a very significant exemption or allowance, and getting no kind of Greenway extension or sidewalk, or just anything in return he would have liked to have seen that. And that was the only sole no vote. Otherwise, no-brainer was kind of the order of the day. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Evangelista. Thank you, sir. Ms. Grannan's done with her report, so it's up to us. Questions, comments, motion?
I just have one question. How do we make sure this doesn't happen again?
Well, if the bridge doesn't have to get rebuilt, then it wouldn't, you mean here or in other locations?
Yeah, I mean, I feel for these homeowners, right, and I'm going to support the motion, but this could happen anywhere, especially with the stormwater problems that we have and best management practices where people want us to take them over. I mean, how, is there anything that we can do to?
Well, it's not always a zoning condition. That was what was unique about this case, is that sometimes people will put a pedestrian bridge in a neighborhood, but it wasn't a zoning condition. That was what was unique about this case, is they couldn't just leave it unbuilt. They had this hanging over their head, so they had to amend the P D D.
Okay.
So, we'll have to look at them on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Motion?
Make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
We'll need, we have a suggested motion.
Ah, so there's a suggested motion. We'll back up and let Mr. France make that suggested motion, and then see if we get a second.
Make a motion to approve, to move to adopt this statement of consistency? Okay.
It's attached to the staff report.
All right, make a move to adopt the statement of consistency as attached to the staff report for this item and to approve seventeen R E Z oh four.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grannan. Now, move to our second discussion item, seventeen R E Z eleven, Kildare Farm Road and Penny Road Assemblage Rezoning. This item was tabled at our May tenth meeting. Before we can receive staff's presentation, we'll need to remove it from the table. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second to remove it from the table discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now, we'll hear from Katie Dry, our Senior Planner, followed by a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Board Chair. Ms. Dry?
Thank you. This is a request to rezone three point three acres at Kildare Farm Road and Penny Road. When the case was last presented on May third, the presentation reviewed the case history and rationale for staff and P and Z Board recommendations. The presentation tonight will be more concise, and we'll share what is proposed and overview of the neighborhood information meeting that was held on June fourth. We will be able to share more information about the history of the case and recommendations that requested. So, this site includes four parcels in the southwest quadrant of the intersection of Kildare Farm Road and Penny Road. The property that's immediately at the corner is on a site that is zero point eight eight acres. There's a gas station which was built in nineteen eighty-eight, approximately twenty-four hundred square feet, with four fueling positions. The total assemblage of property for this rezoning is three point three acres. The current zoning is general commercial and R forty, and the applicant has proposed to rezone all four properties to general commercial conditional use to enable the redevelopment and expansion of the gas station. The proposed conditions associated with this case are to limit the use to convenience store and vehicle filling station. They're prohibiting the use of any drive-throughs or car washes on the site. They're setting the maximum number of fueling positions to eighteen and the maximum building size to forty-eight hundred square feet. They've included a canopy setback so that the canopy would be no closer than a hundred and fifty feet from the intersection, limiting the hours of operation to six A M. to twelve A M. They've proposed increased stormwater control measures, as well as establishing buffers along the western and southern property boundaries, and within those buffers are proposing a privacy fence. On May third, the Town Council tabled the case and requested that the applicant work with the town staff to hold a neighborhood meeting. The purpose of this meeting was to review case information and provide clarifications on the specifics of the case and the process. The neighborhood information meeting was held on June fourth at the Page Walker. The applicant and their attorney were present and answered questions. There were sixteen nearby property owners as well as staff from various town departments. The applicant prepared minutes and has submitted a copy of these minutes, which were attached to the staff report. While there was not a hundred percent consensus of those who attended, there was appreciation expressed for sharing additional information, and overall, those in attendance indicated they better understood the proposal by the end of the meeting. This concludes staff's presentation. Board Chair Mark Evangelista is here to share information on the board proposal, and following that, staff will be available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dry.
I'll try to be as close as I can to what I discussed last time for the sake of consistency, and that was, when we first got the case, it was fifty-five hundred square feet and twenty pumps. This thing was a five to four decision, I believe, so it was on the fence, and one never knows if the change in square footage and the change in pumps might have done it one way or the other. One member thought the traffic estimates provided in the staff report were way too low, and his own personal estimate would have been much higher, so that was an influencing factor for him. But for the folks who voted for this, the zoning conditions, and you saw them listed, I won't reiterate them again, but all of them to benefit essentially the most directly impacted neighborhood, the adjacent neighborhood, and they're all quite, quite, Board members who voted for this were quite impressed with all of them. And then finally, it's just that that intersection is going to be a significantly large intersection. There's G C C U on the other side. It seemed like a very appropriate use for that location. And that's about what we talked about last time, and I'll stop there.
Questions for Mr. Evangelista? Okay, thank you, sir. Before I turn it over to Council members, I want to thank you for supporting me in having this extra time with the citizens. I actually attended. Staff was asked if there's a council member here, and they said there's no one in the room. I was just outside the room, in a chair in the hall, and listened to the entire conversation. When the meeting started, there was pretty much unanimity strongly opposed. As the meeting went on, and also people attending, I'd say the majority of them had been there before. There were a few new people there. This is their first time. So, after the discussion before the applicant handed out, handout, two people expressed that they supported it. The others seemed still strongly opposed, even though they didn't vocalize it. Then the applicant handed out a drawing sketch. I didn't see it. I'm assuming it was a sketch of a site plan, which I immediately told staff, make sure they know that that's not a condition of the rezoning and can't be enforced, and they did. I think it was Ms. Grannan did, somebody did. And however, a lot of the people at that time were really excited. You heard a speaker earlier tonight say that was a big game changer. So, when I left, there was one still strongly opposed. I think he's in attendance tonight. There were others, two others, that were in favor, and I think the rest kind of understood and were no longer strongly opposed. And of course, that's my opinion. That's what I observed. Whether that's correct or not, who knows? But that's what I observed. I think the information session, information meeting was very beneficial. Everybody was on the same page of what information they received, so I think it was a good thing. I did speak to the applicant today. He had minor surgery. Otherwise, he would have been here, and that was his take also of the meeting, that it was very informative, and it went better than he thought. So, that's, I wanted you to know what I saw and what happened at that meeting, and staff can correct me if I was wrong, but that's what I observed. I do think the citizens in that area, there may be some for and there may be some against it, but it was very important that they were there and were heard, and I thank them for participating. One, I didn't know how many would show up, and I thank the staff for participating. There was about a dozen staff members there, I think. There was a bunch, and so it was a good crowd, so that was a good meeting. Anyway, that's kind of where I sat and what I heard. In my view, my opinion, I think I heard all the concerns expressed, most of them I had heard before, and I feel that all of them have been addressed. So, then it comes down to, had they been addressed, how will this benefit the community? How will this hurt the community, help the community? And in my point of view, I think this is a good proposal based on what has been presented to me and what I've heard and what I've heard from the citizens. So, having said that, I'll pass it along to other council members for their remarks and thoughts.
Technical question on the hundred and fifty, the canopy a hundred and fifty feet from the intersection. When we say intersection, we mean the, where the two meet. So, does that mean it's a diagonal measurement from the intersection, or does it mean it's a hundred and fifty feet from either street?
It'll be from the intersection, so where the cursor, yeah, where the cursor is, a hundred and fifty feet in.
And then of the, of the handout that was handed out, that you said, don't look at the site plan, was it, in your estimation, and it was an attempt to give an example of an application of their conditions, like showing setbacks and buffers? Is that what, is that what was?
I think it was their actual drawing.
Yeah, it looked more like an actual site plan, so we tried to just caution the folks who were in attendance that, you know, there's no guarantee that this is exactly what it's going to look like. The staff did try to point out the elements of the plan that had been committed to through zoning conditions, like the canopy setback and the stormwater pond, the fence along things like that.
Okay, that's all, thank you. That's all I have.
Other comments, questions?
No, I think, you know, it's in my area, I live near there. I got a lot of emails, probably the, it may not have broken the record, but it was a heck of a lot of emails that I replied to, and as those of you that received those emails, I did my best to be as, as fair and objective about, and I think I've copied the council on that. I tried to summarize the P and Z meeting, which was a great meeting, and because it was good-depth dialogue, healthy dialogue, and what I tried to convey in my email was that the concerns were almost unanimous among the nine. The dilemma, as we're facing tonight, is does the greater good outweigh the size of, or the magnitude of the fueling positions? Normally, I would, you know, from just all the years of experience of having been burned on promises, I would not accept a document, and I didn't see it, and by the way, I would have been sitting with you if I wasn't out of country, but I was out of, I would have loved to have been flying on the wall for that, that meeting also. But the point is, when I shared with everybody, I tried to share with everybody the complexity of the case and to point out the significant conditions that were offered, and they are. You know, I personally find it surprising that a store would, of this type, would offer conditions to close at, at midnight, basically. I was surprised at that. I was also surprised because of most of the emails I received, there wasn't really a concern about the size of the building. It was more the concern about looks and glare and things of that nature. So, you know, when I have, when I see a developer or a person come forward and listen to the concerns of the neighborhood, reduce the building size, contain the hours of operation, and the, and then offer the stormwater control measures that are significant to the area, it really came down to me, the fueling positions, and I think I publicly have stated several times, in my, my view, this should be at twelve or fourteen, with the opportunity, as the growth happens out there, to come back. So, what I have to weigh is that one component over all the other things that are going on. Now, folks, like I said, I live there, out there too. There's a hundred people a day coming, a hundred people a day. The settlers are coming, and they're not just moving to Cary. What's making it a challenge for us is they're moving to our neighboring towns who now drive through Kildare Farm Road to get to where they're going. So, improvements are being made out there, but that's a major road, a major connector, and this applicant has the right to build, and he has to satisfy our needs. And in looking at this and seeing the follow-up at the last meeting, you know, I think, I think the test has been achieved.
Other comments, questions?
Just start by thanking everybody who's worked on this for so long. The staff has done an excellent job in conducting these meetings, and the applicant's patience and willingness to respond to the feedback received has been extraordinary. And the citizens who provided that feedback, kudos to them for taking the time to understand the process and to understand the project. That doesn't always happen, so I think that's a great thing. I've struggled with this, and right up until tonight, whether to go yea or nay. I would prefer it to be smaller. I would prefer the twelve to fourteen, as Jack just had mentioned, but due to the excellent conditions that have been placed on it, and mostly due to the basically positive response of the citizens recently, I'm going to, with some reluctance, support the rezoning. But let me tell you, considering all the angst and the work that's gone into this, if this is approved tonight, I, it better turn out to be the best dad gum gas station. That's all I can say.
Other comments, questions, or are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion up. Is this, all right. I move to adopt the statement of consistency as attached to the staff report for this item and to approve seventeen R E Z eleven.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Dry, and thanks to all the citizens that were involved. We now move to our third discussion item, Hospitality Tax Small Capital Project Funding Agreement. It's going to be presented by Facilities Planner Sandy Bailey, and Council may take action.
Good evening, Council. In January of this year, Council approved a staff report allowing submission of an application to Wake County for hospitality tax small capital projects funding for projects at two-town venues. The county has since announced awards of those funds, which includes an award to the town, and a funding agreement has been provided to the town for execution. This past February, staff submitted an application seeking seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in hospitality tax funds for projects at Wake Med Soccer Park and Coca-Booth Amphitheater. This included upgrading to an L E D lighting system at Wake Med Soccer Park's Salons Stadium, as well as at Practice Fields two and three. Wake Med hosts N C double A, Major League, and International Soccer events that are broadcast nationally and internationally. An L E D system would allow Wake Med to keep current with international lighting standards for player safety and broadcasting, and to therefore remain eligible for hosting these events. The total project cost at Wake Med is anticipated at one point four million dollars. The funding application sought the maximum Wake County match of thirty-five percent at four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and included a town match of sixty-five percent at nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. The funding application also included improvements to the sound and lighting systems at Coca-Booth Amphitheater, which are the originally installed equipment and systems from the amphitheater's opening in two thousand and one. The total project cost at the amphitheater was estimated at seven hundred thousand dollars. The town's application requested thirty-five percent hospitality tax funding of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and proposed a town match of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. As stated, the town's original application was for a total of seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in hospitality tax funding. The town was notified this past April that the town's request was being recommended for a reduced award in the amount of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and that this recommendation would be taken to the Wake County Commissioners at their April ninth meeting. In May, however, the county notified staff that the town's final award, award had been further reduced to four hundred thousand dollars, so that the county could accommodate an additional project. Upon consideration of the reduction in awarded funding, staff recommends that the four hundred thousand dollars in funding be applied to the installation of L E D lighting at Wake Med Soccer Park. The additional one million dollars required for the project is included in the proposed F Y two thousand and nineteen budget. The imminent need for improved lighting for televised events was an important factor in the determination to apply funding to the Wake Med project. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding has been included in the proposed F Y two thousand and nineteen budget to begin the sound and lighting improvements at Coca-Booth Amphitheater, with remaining funding needs identified in future years of the capital improvements plan. Next steps include execution of the funding agreement, with total project completion taking place by the summer of two thousand and nineteen. Staff recommends adoption of the resolution approving the funding agreement and authorizing its execution by the town manager's office, as well as recognizing four hundred thousand dollars in our local funding. Thank you, and staff are available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments?
Motion.
Motion.
Plenty of comments, but I'm going to keep them to myself.
Is he making it? No, he's not. I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving the agreement for hospitality tax, small capital project funding.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion.
I'm just going to add it, because every time we talk about Coca-Booth, I have to say it, but I would love to see the day when we come back with a recommendation to fund a Jumbotron, or a screen, so you could actually see the performers onstage from way back at the crescent.
No argument here. No. There's actually some of the acts that don't allow it, but there's enough to do, and I'd love to see that happen in the future.
And the four hundred thousand that they were granting us wasn't to be necessarily spread apart, across both, that can be applied the way we're applying it, I'm assuming.
Any other questions? Motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. We now move to our last discussion item, six point four, Open Data Policy. Innovation and Analytics Manager, Reed Sirrozi.
Sirrozi.
Sorry. In print, it looks different, so. Mr. Sirrozi will present the item, and the Council may take action.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your consideration this evening. As I bring forward on behalf of staff and citizens, an open data policy for the town of Cary, the recommendation is for Council to approve. What is open data? To answer that question, let's step back for a moment. Council has always been on the forefront of open government and transparency. Starting in nineteen ninety-seven, the town developed a website for a more efficient way to deliver meeting information to Town Council. The website furthered open government and transparency, since the public receives council meeting information at the same time as council members. Now, let's fast forward. The town launched an open data portal in two thousand and sixteen, which catalogs commonly requested town data that is in public record. The evolution of open data portals have been inspired by municipalities shifting towards releasing data in an open manner. As we look to the future, three-one-one will be the operational engine to keep open data relevant and current with near-real-time updates. The benefits of open data are diverse in range, from promoting economic development and enhancing consumer choices, to integrating technology into the delivery of our services, and improving the quality of life of our community. Examples of published data from the town's open data portal include Greenway usage by citizens, building permit inspections since two thousand and nine, and upcoming road closures. Speaking of road closures, mobile applications like Waze, owned by Google, consume the town's road closure data to help drivers be safer on the road and more knowledgeable about construction, downtown festivals, or anything else that can cause delays. It's important to note the following. The open data policy was developed in conjunction with the Sunlight Foundation as part of its participation in the Bloomberg What Works Cities Initiative. The Sunlight Foundation is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that advocates for open government. The organization was founded in two thousand and six with the goal of increasing transparency and accountability. The policy will guide the town, as it continues to make sets of public records freely accessible at no cost to the public through the open data portal. If approved, the town of Cary will join an extensive list of a hundred and forty municipalities, counties, and states that have developed an open data policy. For example, Charlotte, Durham, and Greensboro, just to name a few here in North Carolina. Last, I would like to quote Noel Isham, policy analyst, who partnered with the town of Cary on behalf of the Sunlight Foundation. Noel played an instrumental part in, to help provide the mentoring to ensure that we integrate input from residents and the town's information services advisory board. Having worked with nearly twenty cities to develop and approve open data policies, I can safely say that the policy developed by the town of Cary is one of the most comprehensive and detailed policies I have seen. Not only does it contain a high number of best practices, but it also maintains the spirit of transparency that open data is supposed to bring once implemented. This concludes staff's presentation. At this time, I'd like to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sirrozi. Ms. Bush, you might find this hard to believe, back in nineteen ninety-seven, I was a techie. I wrote H T M L, and I had that dial-up going full blast every night. I recommended, standing at the podium, that the town have a dynamic website, so the information could get out there.
You might be surprised, but I watched that.
But what's amazed me is how far we've come, and I think this proposal is outstanding, because what I wanted at that time and what I want today is the citizens to get information as fast as they can get it, by any means they can get it, and I think that's what this is doing. Am I correct? Now, I'm not a techie anymore.
Yeah, I think the best, if you're not a techie and you're actually interested in this... in this, we already have an open data portal, so we've already been providing this information. What this policy does is it puts us guidelines around what we do, what we collect, how we use it, and most importantly, it shows our citizens that we are committed to openness and transparency, and doing it all in the sunlight, as the foundation, the Sunlight Foundation says. It's a guide, right? And the good thing is that, as Reed said, the citizens weighed in on this. This was posted on a Madison.io website, where citizens, not just the ISAB, who were quite instrumental in giving us feedback, but citizens from all over Cary commented, even, you know, changing a word here or there, really asking for the meaning of something. Citizens all across Cary, and outside of Cary, actually, participated in giving us feedback on the policy. So even though staff is bringing it, it's had a lot of feedback, and so I would like to thank the entire Information Technology Department, our CIO Nicole Raimondo, the Sunlight Foundation, Bloomberg, who provided the grant, but really, most importantly, the citizens. They're the ones who weighed in the most and asked really interesting questions about what we're doing, and it's really smart and engaged citizens in the town of Cary.
Very good. Any other comments, or are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the open data policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
A bunch of seconds. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Sirrozy, and please thank everyone else involved, because I think this is a big deal.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready to go into closed session. This time, I'll recognize Ms. Bush.
Pursuant to G S one-four-three-three-eighteen, eleven-eight-one, and three, I move that we hold a closed session to consider, to consult with attorneys employed by and retained by the town, in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, and also to prevent the disclosure of information that's made privileged or confidential by G S one-four-three-three-eighteen-ten-E.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's unanimous, and we're in a closed session. Motion's unanimous, and we're in a closed session.
Way that is just...